If I could get everybody to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get into any more, is there anybody that would like to approve the minutes from last month's meeting, or is there any discussion?
So moved.
Shari moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Patrick, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Okay. We do have a quorum tonight. To my left, I have the Vice Chair Brad Cohen, and then Jay Scheckman, Patrick McTeague, and Steve Gannon. And to my right, I have Bill Rotella and Shari McCartney. And my name is Mike Weymouth. Next, if you plan to speak tonight, please rise and be sworn in. Raise your right hand.
Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay. And coming up to the dais is Mary Furtig. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you.
Do we have Leslie? Do we have a stenographer or court reporter? Is this being recorded? Do we need to pause for a reason?
No, she can just listen to the recording and take the minutes. Is she on her way, or?
Lisa's checking to see where she's at.
So I can move forward?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, let's, well, while we're doing this, Ella, I've got the names here, so I will introduce to you the staff members from the different departments of the city that are here tonight. Ella Parker, who is the Planning and Design Manager, welcome. Shari Wallen, who's Assistant City Attorney. And then we have City Staff Yvonne Rudding, Jim Hetzel, Adam Schnell, Lorraine Tappan. So welcome. Okay, so first up tonight, case number UDP A22056. I will start with, let's start down at the end. Steve, any disclosures?
Yes, a site visit and also spoke to applicant's attorney.
Patrick McTeague, I did a site visit and also spoke with the attorney for the applicant.
Jay Scheckman spoke with the attorney for the applicant.
Brad Cohen, site, a site visit, and I missed a call from the applicant's attorney.
Do you want to have a private call right now? Mary? Oh, you weren't here in time. I was, there you go.
Visit the site?
Shari?
I missed a call from Ms. Crush. Didn't happen to speak to her.
Bill?
Visited the site and spoke with the applicant's attorney.
I too visited the site, and I did speak to the applicant's counsel as well. So, all right. Good evening, Ms. Crush. There's a little button in the middle, I think. Do they have the same technology? No?
That work?
Medic? Is that working?
Is it amplified? No. But Miss Furtig can hear me. The light went on.
Check, one, two.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name is Courtney Crush. Here today on behalf of the property owner of 2731 North Federal Highway, the Patel's who are in the audience with me. Also with me this evening is Lauren Plefner, Law Clerk with Crush Law. And shortly joining us will be Joaquin Vargas, Traffic Engineer. Here before the board this evening to discuss a proposed parking reduction request for an approved Holiday Inn Express site plan, as I said, at 2731 North Federal Highway. The screen in front of you, the property on which six, an existing motel is outlined in red. It is Zone B1, is nearby to the former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, and has been in the Patel family for a very long time. Pictures of the site and the budget in today. What's on the screen before you is the approved Holiday Inn Express. You will note that the property has the approved hotel, 110-room hotels, rooms located on the east, closest to Federal Highway, and has three levels of parking and a freestanding garage to the west of that. We worked, the site plan was approved in 2021, and we worked over a year process, not only with city staff, with the Coral Shores neighborhood, which is across the water, and Mr. Vargas also worked with FDOT. Certainly having a B1 zoning and a pretty intense commercial corridor was something that required design respect, both as to the commercial corridor and also design that would be respectful of our neighbors across the waterway in Coral Shores. You will also note that there is a strip of land that lies west of the purple foliage. It actually has a lot of vegetation on it. It's actually owned by the city of Fort Lauderdale and who took it from Broward County, who took it back from a property owner who never wanted to sell it, for whatever reason, who didn't pay their taxes. I mention that only as part of the site plan discussions with our neighbors had to do with unwanted activity, people camping out there, to put it politely, and dumping, et cetera. So part of the approved site plan secured access to that strip so that it cannot be a nuisance with locked gates that can only be opened by the city or by the property owner. As I mentioned, the Holiday Inn Express was approved in 2021. It is 110 guest rooms, and in the garage you see on the screen, provided 110 parking spaces. Following site plan approval, the property was replatted, both with, through the city of Fort Lauderdale and then ultimately by approved and by the Broward County Commission. In going towards construction drawings, Holiday Inn Express, which does have a contract with the property owner, the Patel's, and the Patel's do not believe that a hotel in this decade with Uber and with the commitment to provide a dedicated on-hotel shuttle for only this hotel really requires 110 parking spaces. So our clients engaged Mr. Vargas to do an analysis, both of some existing similar-type hotels, but also to examine what ITE published as an appropriate number of parking spaces. So the request before you tonight is to provide 75 parking spaces and a hotel-only-serving shuttle. Another component of the, I guess a result of the request, is this proposal would not provide three levels of parking, it would provide two. So the effect of that is to take, to reduce the height of the garage. Right now, the top of the parapet, again, which we worked very carefully with our neighbors across the water in design, while screened by landscaping, is 32 feet. Reducing a level of part of a garage brings it down to 22 feet. That essentially is the perspective of the reduced height of the garage associated with providing the 75 parking spaces, and as you can see, ensures that the generous landscaping really, really buffers the property from being viewed from the residential neighbors across the water. Now, Mr. Vargas did conduct, as I mentioned, took some actual counts in season at the end of 2019, beginning of 2020, at some comparably type hotels on State Road 84. He also, as I mentioned, reviewed the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE, Parking Generation Manual, and determined that the ITE recommends not .72, which Mr. Vargas, who's my favorite traffic engineer, did type into his report, but .62 parking spaces for this type of limited-service hotel. So using the ITE, national standard, that would result in ITE indicating that this type of hotel with this number of rooms should have 69 parking spaces. We are proposing 75 parking spaces and a airport shuttle. Just wanted to give you an overview of the site plan. As you can see, the freestanding hotel is on the east of the property, and the garage does not change, nor does any other aspect of the site plan, change at the ground level. We are simply proposing to have one additional level of parking instead of the two that you saw in the renderings. Parking reductions, as this board knows, are brought forward when one is able to demonstrate that a particular use has an actual need for something that is distinct from the city's code. The city's parking requirement, other than the beach, has not changed in decades and is reflected in ITE and also in the observations Mr. Vargas made. This hotel will not need 110 parking spaces. So we very much would appreciate the board's consideration and approval of a parking reduction, which not only provides the right amount of parking, but also has the added benefit of reducing height as it tends towards our neighbors in Coral Shores. And with that, I and Mr. Vargas are here to answer any questions.
So anybody have any questions before we open it up to the public? Jay?
Just to clarify, if we were to not approve the parking reduction request today, do you already have the approvals to build with the larger amount of parking?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone else? You have a question, Brad?
How many employees are expected to work at the hotel, and are they going to be using that parking as well?
One moment, Mr. Vice Chair. Vice Chair Cohen, over three shifts between 22 and 25, so eight at a time, and advised, since the owners have the hotel today, that most of those employees take buses.
I was going to support that. Most of the employees at the Riverside Hotel come in on buses, well. So is there anybody else that's got a question? I got a couple of quick ones. Any idea what the guest mix is going to be, transient versus business guests?
I think a mix of businesses is not near a business center. I think the Patel's have heard back from Holiday Inn, who's been committed to this site for about four years. There will be transient who perhaps would like something more modestly priced than would be on Fort Lauderdale beach, because if you're in Minnesota, even being on US-1 feels close to the beach. And certainly anybody who might be doing business in the limited office buildings around could certainly find that convenient.
Well, and the purpose for my question is somebody from Minnesota is not necessarily going to drive in. Most of your guests are more than likely going to be coming in.
From the airport.
Okay.
Hence the requirement from the Holiday Inn to have that shuttle, because they believe people are coming from the airport.
My last question is that strip that's west of the Purple Hedge that the city owns, is there a maintenance agreement between the owner of the hotel and the city to maintain that? I would imagine that the city would forget that that's back there and then become, hence, another eyesore for the Coral Shores neighborhood.
Certainly open to discussion. The city unfortunately doesn't forget that it's back there, because I think they hear from the neighbors about the activity back there. The seawall is greatly deteriorated, and we hope to coordinate with the city on construction timing and reconstruction of that. I don't think the Patel's are opposed to maintenance back there. I mean, it benefits everybody, and as I said, it will now be secure where you can't walk from, I mean, you could come by boat, but you can't walk back there anymore. Will not be able to walk back there anymore after the hotel is constructed.
My suggestion would be to have the city fix the seawall, and then they should deed over to the Patel's that property so we can start collecting taxes on it, and they can maintain it. maintain it. That's my suggestion.
Not an unreasonable suggestion.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open it up? Go ahead, Jay.
Did you speak to the neighbors on either side of the property and determine how they feel about your request to reduce the parking?
We have not spoken to the commercial neighbors recently.
Is there any indication that construction of the property would jeopardize whatever remaining integrity there is of the seawall?
We did look at that. We are able to, because we are set back 20, construction is set back 20 feet east of the Purple Hedges, we're able to put a fence and also obviously be very, being very careful and in discussions with the neighbor, make sure there's no inadvertent drainage into the body of water. So we can set back far enough and not further impact the seawall.
Okay, just want to just express the concern that we don't, wouldn't want the seawall to collapse.
Absolutely not. Actually, the Patel's have been asking for the seawall to be, you know, prioritized for more than a decade. It actually creates a drainage problem, which is on their property and has over the years, so we're really hoping we can coordinate and come to a solution, perhaps as your chair suggests.
Okay, thank you.
It would also be suggested that they do that to do the seawall at the same time as construction.
Absolutely.
Because that's all fixed bridges back there and you cannot get a full-size barge back there, so. Any other questions before we open it up to the public? All right, has anybody shown up tonight to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, then we will close the public participation and bring it back to the board. Whoa, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, sir. Come on up, come on up. Are you, are you representing HOA or are you?
I'm just a resident.
Okay, no, that's fine. The only reason I ask is because the HOA representatives get five minutes to talk. You, on a special condition, get two minutes. So please step up to the microphone, give us your name, your address, and we'll go from there.
Hey, everyone, I'm Gary James and I'm at 1218 Northwest Fourth Avenue in, I think we're going to be talking about the zoning next time. And I just wanted to ask a question, what does happen to the overflow? If there is overflow of, in parking, what, what would happen with that at all? Is, is there some plan for that?
Do you have an answer for that?
Yes, there is not going to be overflow. The hotels that we looked at of similar type are actually parking lower than ITE. I mean, the parking lots are half-full, I think throughout our city, and I know people frequent hotels, but whether you're on the beach or State Road 84, they're like 40% full, and that's in December and January. Added, so, and that's why ITE is, you know, a national publication. They're finding that this limited-service hotel in a somewhat urban area is, you know, .62. So people are not willing to spend money to rent cars to do that. Now, in addition to that, we do have the shuttle and that's on top of the ITE rate. Practically, if there were ever 100% occupancy, you know, in years, and again, the data tells us it's not going to happen. I mean, I Uber if I'm close enough, and this is still, you know, five miles from the airport. Someone wouldn't stay in a hotel if they couldn't get a parking space, because I mean, this is on federal highway, you can't, you know, there has to be a solution.
Okay.
I guess in theory, one, if that were ever, the hotel is 100% full all the time and people decide they hate Uber and they don't want to take the shuttle, I guess the Patel's would rent off-site. But again, over decades, we are not seeing that behavior nationwide.
And that, that shuttle is, is paid for by the city?
Nope. The shuttle is paid for by the hotel owner. It's, it's for the hotel, back and forth to the airport as a, as a courtesy.
Those were my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard from the public before I close? Public comment. Seeing hearing none, public hearing is closed and we'll bring it back to the board. Go ahead, Jay.
Go ahead, Mary.
I was just going to move to.
Light, turn your light on, please. Thank you.
Thanks. I was going to move to approve the resolution approving a site plan Level 3 case number UDP A22056, but this is actually a parking reduction, based on the findings of staff and the presentation tonight. And we find the application meets the standards and requirements of the ULDR and criteria for the proposed use.
Does your motion include the condition in the staff report?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion before we vote? Oh, you are here, look at that, poof. Are you ready to take your role?
Yes.
Wonderful. For those of you that don't know, this is our prototype, Leslie.
Thank you. Okay, oh, there we go. Mr. Schekman?
Yes.
Ms. Vertig?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Passes.
Passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, case number UDP Z22029. Again, we'll start down the left, Steve, any disclosures?
Yes, site visit and, no, just a site visit, that was it.
Patrick McTeague also did a site visit. Jay?
Jay Schekman, site visit.
None.
Brad Cohen. Mary?
Mary Vertig, site visit. And I'm turning my microphone on to say site visit. I have none.
Bill Rotella has none.
And I had a site visit.
Okay, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Could you please say your name?
And fellow commissioners.
I'm sorry?
Fellow commissioners, hello also.
If you could please introduce yourself.
My name is George David, I am the agent, authorized agent for the stakeholders of the property and the applicant, Barville Ventures Corporation, record, owners of record for MacCorp Platt, which is the subject of this rezoning request. I've reviewed staff comments and narrative, I feel they're comprehensive, so I would like to open this discussion with the question that is there any comments or question from the commission?
Am I to assume that you do not want to present your, your case to the commission?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so why don't we start with that and then we'll, we'll ask the questions afterwards?
Well, the, the property consists, it's a, it's a previously developed property starting in 1996. There presently is a generator, sales and service business operating on it. It's been expanded one time in 2015, I believe, for an addition. There is a hiatus on the back of the property that is owned, mixed-use residential, which the zoning was flexed out in, I believe, 1996. I'm not sure exactly. So the existing residential zoning, mixed-use, there's two zonings, RD15 and RMM25, are basically redundant because they cannot be developed into a residential use and they become a stalwart for further development of the property. The owners of the property have elected to rezone to CB, which is a conducive zoning for the surrounding environment and the community. The existing zoning on the majority of the property is B2. The use of the property is consistent with B2 zoning. Any future development of the property would be ancillary to the existing use of the property, which is also compliant with the CB zoning, which is explained in the staff narrative.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, sir. Are there any questions from the board for the applicant? Mary?
Yeah.
Microphone?
I went, visited the site and I noticed, and I see in your picture, there, there's a large number of residences right directly behind you. Did you speak with them and what was their reaction?
We had a public participation meeting held on-site and we had a very light turnout. There was one per, nobody from that neighborhood came out. One person from down the street that owned a residence came out in support of the zoning change and that was a, that was the only public participation we had on the property.
Okay, and how did you advertise that meeting?
It was through mailing.
It was through mailing, okay, thank you.
As per the requirement of the zoning request.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none at this time, we'll open up public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public participation portion of this meeting, bring it back to the board. Is there any further discussion from the board or somebody would like to make a motion?
Okay, I'll move, hold on, let me find that, I move to recommend approval of case number, case number, UDP Z22029, based on the finding, of the presentation tonight and the findings affect, and we find it meets the criteria of the ULDR.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Second. Second from Patrick McTeague. Any further discussion before we take it to a vote? Ms. Leslie, if you'd call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Schekman?
Yes.
Ms. Vertig?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Eight.
Your case is approved unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, have a good evening, sir. Next up is case number UDP P22005. We received correspondence asking for a deferral until April. I don't know if there's any discussion that anybody wants to have or if somebody wants to make a motion to defer this until April.
I'll make a motion to defer case number UDP P22005.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. Do we need to call roll on this or can it be a voice vote?
You could do all in favor, I just want to clarify that it's to April 19th meeting, the motion? Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion to move this to the April 19th, 2023 meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Next up, case number UDP S22015. And again, we'll start with disclosures, Steve?
Site visit and phone call with applicant's attorney.
Patrick McTeague, site visit and also spoke with applicant's attorney.
Jay Schekman, same as Patrick. Brad Cohen, none.
Mary?
I spoke with Mr. Lockery and I visited the site.
Mary, I'm sorry.
I received a call from Mr. Lockery, but wasn't able to take the call.
Spoke with Mr. Lockery.
I did a site visit, spoke to Mr. Lockery, and I think I can speak to the whole board that we got a communication about a $30,000 contribution to some traffic calming, I believe is what it is, but I did receive that communication as well. Good evening, Mr. Lockery.
Good evening to the board, Robert Lockery on behalf of the applicant. Couple of things I want to, just a little bit of paperwork or, or important point I want to make before we start, is you may have seen from your staff report, this is approval for a mixed-use project at 1515 Southeast 17th Street. And the 180-day statutory period of time by which the city has to make a decision on an application is actually today. So in discussing this with the city staff, they reached out to us, we've agreed mutually to extend that period for an additional 30 days, so that if the project is approved tonight, the city commission would still have the ability for a call-up process. So just want to put that on the record, in talking to the city, it seemed like a reasonable thing to do and so we've agreed to do that. Again, my name is Robert, if there's any questions about that, happy to answer it. Again, my name is Robert Lockery, on behalf of the applicant, the request is for a mixed-use project, including existing commercial uses, retail uses and restaurant uses, and the addition of new residential, retail and commercial uses. If, if, I don't know if my, if you all can see my screen, this one? Okay, great. Not sure why that the yellow line around the property is gone, but it is the Quay Shopping Center, which is located right where my hand is, just to the east of the Renaissance Hotel, which is located over here. It is on the same site as what was formerly Bimini Boatyard, now just the Boatyard, located right here, and of course, to the east or to its west is Southport Shopping Center. So it's the east of that. It's about a seven-acre site, there's a little bit of a closer view of it. In this view, you have the Seminole Canal on the north side, 17th Street on the south at the bottom. Renaissance Hotel is over here, this is Google Earth, which says this is Eisenhower Drive or Eisenhower Boulevard, that's not Eisenhower Boulevard. That's a little bit further to the east itself. This is an internal driveway that serves this shopping center. The application itself is to replace this surface parking lot with a parking garage, the residential and the retail uses. This is kind of the overall plan, which is now tilted on its side. So what you see in this view on the right side is the Seminole, so the river, so that's the north side of the property, or to the right. To the south is 17th Street, that's on the left. The east is on the bottom and the west is on the top of the screen. The buildings that you see up here that I'm putting my hand around are the existing commercial and restaurant uses, which will remain. And essentially, the new garage and new structure goes on the previously surfaced parking lot. Access to the site will be essentially the same, coming in off this main drive. There's a secondary service driveway on the west side that will also remain. I'll show you where the main vehicular entrances are to the project itself in a, in a side view, but essentially it's right in this location and right in this location, so you can come at the building and to the garage, both from the east and to the west. As you look around the building, and of course, I'll show the elevations and show you what that looks like, I think some of the important points are also in your staff report. One example is the amount of open space that's required, I think it's about 50,000 square feet. This project is providing over 100,000 square feet. The pedestrian plazas, the open areas are all in excess of what the city code requires and in fact, the setbacks are in excess of what the code requires. Particularly along 17th Street, again, on the south side of the project, but on the left side of your screen, the code requirement for this inter-district corridor is a 20-foot setback. Instead, this building is set back at its, at its most narrow point, right up at this location on the west side, about 32 feet, and extends over 40 feet at this open plaza right at 17th Street in the entrance to the property. I'll show you what that looks like. This is a close-up view of just the, the building we're talking about, the existing buildings are off the sides of this slide. As I said, there's a vehicular driveway into the garage on the west, as well as one on the east. These are the plaza areas that I described, which include large wide sidewalks, planning areas, additional shade trees, as well as outdoor dining. That outdoor dining wraps around the corner of the commercial portion of the building, including on the west side. Similarly, on the east side, there's a large pedestrian plaza, sidewalks that curve around the entire building with additional little park and plaza space on the west side, or on the north side, rather, and other plazas on the east side. So I'll show you what all that looks in context. The building itself is actually three different heights. Along 17th Street, we're at 15 stories, a little bit further to the north is eight stories and then on the north side is 12 stories. I do want to say when this project began, both portions of the building were 15 stories, but in working with the neighbor, working with both the neighbors but also with city staff, we brought that north side down and I'll show you a little bit what that looks like in context. But again, on the ground floor level, you have the commercial space facing 17th Street, the residential units above that. One other thing that changed through the process is the garage is completely lined with residential units. So the garage, which is in the center of the building, you no longer see any cars from any angle. This is a close-up view of that corner at the southeast corner of the site, showing the commercial areas along 17th Street, the plaza area, the large white sidewalk, the shade trees, and then 17th Street, a little bit further to the south. This is actually from the other side of the view, so this is as you're looking to the, to the east or driving to the east. Again, the outdoor area along the project itself, large sidewalk, shade trees, and then some green space. So you can tell from the architectural design, it's a very modern, contemporary design, we think it has a really cool. think it has a really cool look. This is an internal view, essentially from Boatyard is right over here, so again, you're not seeing any garage, you're only seeing the residential units. And this is the portion of the building that steps down as it gets closer to the north, and to the residents to the north. Whoops. Oh, I'm missing a slide, that's all right, this one works too. This, what I was showing you is a slide from the west looking east, but it's very similar in the sense that was once, what was once previously a garage is now lined with residential units. So here you see facing, on the south side facing 17th Street, you've got the 15-story project, which is consistent, portion of the project, which is consistent with your city code. It then comes down to eight stories, which is, in, behind these buildings is the garage itself, with an amenity deck on top of that, so even when you're up above it, you're not looking down on cars. And then on the north side of the building, it steps down, as I said, to 12 stories, about 120 feet, so significantly less than 150 that is permitted by code. The project has been designed to not only provide for the parking for itself, but obviously for all the existing tenants that are on the site, just to run you through the parking numbers a little bit. Currently on that site, there are 362 parking spaces. Anybody who's been there knows that those parking spaces don't all meet code, it is a grandfathered parking lot, a lot of compact spaces, a lot of spaces are a little bit shorter. That's being replaced with the garage and with surface parking that will all now meet code. And the 362 spaces that, that provide for the commercial uses are being replaced by 415 parking spaces for the commercial, there's actually a net gain in parking spaces for non-residential uses, in addition to 664 parking spaces for the residential use, for a total of 1,079 parking spaces. There is no reduction in the request for the residential portion of the parking, and in talking to our neighbors in Harbordale, they also requested that we ensure that those residential users don't fill up the commercial parking. So the project was actually, some tweaking was done just over the last couple of months to ensure that the residential parking, which fully meets code, is all on the top levels of the garage, that way the commercial, the restaurants that exist there will continue to exist on the bottom four, four floors of the garage. In addition to that, there will be valet provided for the Boatyard, which currently uses, right now they kind of just take up a lot of spaces, those valet spaces will be at the garage itself. That's an overview of the project, I do want to say, and the chair mentioned this as well, in talking to the folks in Harbordale over the course of the last couple of months, one of the issues that they have raised is some concern that traffic from this site, and I can show you where it is, but I think you all know, if we need to show, we can. We'll use some side streets, particularly 15th Avenue to kind of get out, 15th Street, sorry, 15th Street, get out further to Federal Highway rather than using 17th Street. They have some plans in place and they've been looking at different opportunities to do some traffic calming in that area. And we have voluntarily made a commitment to them and to the city, which I'll hand out the letter that specifies that, as our voluntary contribution of $30,000 towards those improvements. That contribution will be to the city itself, the city will hold it in trust, working with the Harbordale Civic Association, as well as working with the Transportation Mobility Department towards that. So I would suggest that a condition be made, I'm going to read it, it's kind of long. Prior to issuance of a building permit for a principal building, applicant voluntary agrees to pay $30,000 to the city to be used towards the funding of traffic calming measures within Harbordale, with the, with the preference given toward traffic calming improvements identified in the applicant's traffic study. We did revise our traffic study a couple of times to take these into consideration and look at opportunities that would exist along 15th, we've identified in that study. That part's not in the verbatim part, I'm sorry, that was just me editorializing. Going back to it, this condition is subject to acceptance of funds by the city commission at a city commission public hearing, traffic calming measures are subject to see Fort Lauderdale policy and requirements, and shall be subject to review of pretty, approval of city Fort Lauderdale Transportation and Mobility Department. But again, we've done the studies to back that up, at our cost, we're providing that to the city, as well as a contribution for those traffic calming installations. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lockery. Jay, I see you reaching for your button.
So if you're making the payment before building permits, then where is that money held, is that held with the city, or?
Yeah, so it would be held by the city in trust, as the association, and up to building permit, the city can already be working with the civic association on identifying what those improvements are.
And what happens in the event of the city not determining that any traffic calming measures meet the criteria and there therefore are no, no uses for the funds?
Well, if they can't be used to, the, the way it's written, it's for the preference is for where those traffic improvements would be made, which is along 15th, but if not used in that area, if the city and the neighborhood association didn't agree on that, it could be used elsewhere for that purpose. But again, we did do a study that shows how it can be used, so we feel comfortable that it can be used for that purpose.
Thank you.
Anyone else for it? Mary, go ahead, turn your light on, thank you.
Okay, my first question, I'll bring this up when we finish, but it doesn't seem like an extension of 30 days is long enough, having watched this happen a couple of times recently. Are you all amenable to 60 days, just to make sure, or not?
Well, under the city code, the commission, even if it wasn't for the 180 days, they only have 30 days.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm just, in abundance of caution, you hadn't thought about that.
I think we would extend it, but I'm not extending the city commissions, in other words, there's internal limitations.
No, 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 I understand that, I understand that, okay. Then, my next thing, I, I was a few minutes late because I went to visit the site, which was fully parked when I got there. So you mentioned that the traffic reduction did not impact the
Residential.
The residential, but, so it's coming from the commercial?
It's coming from the commercial, it's a 5% multimodal reduction for the commercial portion of the project.
Yeah.
But again, with the, I just, again, what I stated, we are providing more parking that's there today, and certainly more code compliant.
I understand, it was just that it was fully parked and I wondered how.
Yeah, just the residential's fully parked, that's correct.
And then, is 17th Street, what, is 17th Street an F-rated road, do you know the answer to this and this point? And has that been taken into consideration? Because if you're going to be doing traffic calming on 15th, again
Right.
So, for, you know, 17th is backed up a good portion of the time, and I'm just wondering, is it F-rated in that area?
Couple of things going, yeah, couple of things going on.
And I, I know we have somebody from Traffic and Mobility here.
Yeah.
And two, what have you done to account for the impact of 361 residential units on what occurs right in that spot right now?
That's a great question. So, part of our traffic study and working with the city's traffic analysis is actually conducting actual counts of certain intersections and determining what the impact will be for those. Among the other things that were looked at is the historic traffic amounts on 17th Street and how that factors into it, as well as some improvements that are coming down the road. One of them, probably the most significant, is the Port Bypass Road, that has to be under construction, or has to be completed prior to the convention center coming onboard, as well as to improvements that FDOT and the county are already making at certain intersections, including the real Eisenhower, not the one that comes right by our site, but further to the east and 17th Street. So Suzanne Danielson is our traffic engineer, she can speak more specifically on those items, but all, the, I don't know if, that 17th Street itself fails, there's certainly some intersections we all know that fail from time to time.
Just request that we get an answer on that question as to whether it's a failing road.
Yes, the answer is 17th Street is not an F-rated road, it's not a failing road.
Okay.
Pursuant to FDOT standards.
What is it, can we ask what it is, since you're here? Level of Service D.
And, Level Service D, and this does not take 17th Street into an F category.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, if you can't, if you, if you don't want people to go through the neighborhood, and 17th Street is backed up at that point all the time, how you're going to impact it coming out.
Well, and I think, look, this is a voluntary commitment, so I can say, it doesn't necessarily have to be tied directly to our project, in the sense that I think this is something that, whether we were coming in with the project or not, is something that the civic association's looked to do for a long time, we're happy to help out with that.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Ms. McCartney.
Robert, do you have a depiction of the flow, as, as we look at it now, we're looking from the east, right?
Right.
And, so then there's 17th Street.
So those are the graphics that aren't working. Let me go back to an overview, I can do it from here probably. So the flow into the site.
So the egress, so, you know, at 8:00 in the morning when everyone's leaving to go to work and they're going down the side street or up 15th with the calming.
Yeah.
How is that, is there a light at that corner?
Well, most folks, yeah, most traffic will absolutely be on 17th Street, because you have a easy right out onto 17th Street directly from your entrance here, you come out on 17th Street, from 17th Street you can go north and south on federal, or when the bypass road is, is open, you could come down Eisenhower and use that.
And I guess that's what I wanted to ask about, so how does the left turn look and how would that flow?
So the left turn, you would, a couple of ways to come out, you would either, most likely, you would come through this private driveway here and come out onto this intersection.
And there's a light there?
Yeah, there's a light there, yeah. And either go straight eventually, because right now, remember, traffic cannot go south into the port, that'll be alleviated, if you're going out to 95, or 595.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we open it up to the public for comment?
I just have a quick question. Robert, on the, I see there's a valet agreement with the Boatyard, is the rest of the parking for the commercial, is that free or metered, or what is that?
It's, it's most likely at this condition, where this is, it'll be free parking, unless there's a problem. I mean, at the Whole Foods at 17th Street and federal, there's always a concern that they might have to charge if people start to use it for the airport, that's just never happened, so I don't, I don't foresee that.
And how many additional square feet of, of commercial is being added?
So it's about 12,000 square feet, and those are included within the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to the public.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this? Sir, would you like to, anybody want to speak on this? Anybody wants to come, speak on it, please come forward. Marilyn, I saw you come in a little bit late, were you sworn in? Okay, so let's do a second swearing-in if we can, Sherry, for this item and the next item, anybody that hasn't been sworn in, that anticipates talking on an item, please get sworn in.
Please raise your right hand if you're going to speak to the board today and you haven't been sworn in. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, folks, if you, if you want to speak, if you'll queue up, unless you're a HOA representative, I'm going to give you two minutes, if you're an HOA representative, please disclose that so that we know, I would greatly appreciate it. Marilyn, do you want to start?
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Board, my name is Marilyn Momano, I am president of the Harbordale Civic Association. We have had a presentation of this project at our general membership meeting, and we have had a number of individual meetings with the applicant and the city staff to go over the particulars and the details. And we did not take a, a vote on this application, because I don't know a civic association in the city that's going to support the increase of density in their neighborhood, which is going to just increase the traffic and deteriorate our quality of life, especially in a community that has experienced already this year, three days, when we had total gridlock and people could not move and we had to walk out of our houses and EMS vehicles couldn't get to us, and that was with the convention center operating at a third of its capacity and no hotel. So there's no point in us actually voting to support or not support a project like this, because this is the plan. This is smart growth, this is the city's plan to densify the avenue blocks and to put all the flex units there, and our zoning implements that plan, and as you can see from the presentation, this project meets all of the zoning requirements. We were able to engage with the staff and the applicant to point out, as Robert explained, that the original proposal for a free and open parking lot, shared parking lot between the commercial and the residential, was contrary to reality, that eventually the developer would figure out that he'd have to cordon off a portion of the garage for his residential units, because those people are going to demand a designated parking space and they're not going to fight with the commercial people to get a, a spot. So adjustments were made, more parking was provided for the residents at a separate higher floors, and that the parking reduction is only being requested for the commercial uses. You were there, you've seen that parking lot, it's completely full almost all the time, but that is what his proposal is, a small reduction in the parking component. The building is a very nice building, it's no higher than the, permitted by the zoning and it's stepped and it's, it's very pretty, and so there's nothing to, to complain about that. One may, it may not be your particular, you know, architecture, but that's not what we're here to discuss. So what we did, instead of, you know, cursing the darkness and screaming and yelling that it's just too dense and there's too many units, is we tried to engage and get some, some accommodation to the realities of life. And one of the most realities of life is, according to the traffic study, federal, 17th Street in its entirety is not an F-rated street, but various intersections are F-rated, so what's the difference in reality? It's only in planner land, and traffic planner lands especially, that these things make a difference. So, you know, we could have spent hours and hours, more than the hours and hours we spend going over the traffic study, but, you know, we're a small civic association and we're very fortunate to have some expertise and some people who have the time and the energy to engage at this level. And so we made some, some comments and the developer made some accommodations, and voluntarily agreed to do some additional traffic studies above and beyond what the city was requiring. And, you know, I could do a whole two to three hours on the inadequacy of the current traffic studies that the city requires developers to do, but that's not what we're here to talk about tonight. So within the process that we had in front of us, within the parameters of what we could do, we tried to get the best things for our community that we could, more parking and an accommodation of the inevitable additional through traffic that we're going to have on 15th Street. And despite whatever, I don't know, fantasies I think the developer has that this is not going to, that his development is not going to be mired in gridlock, it is. And so the applicant very, very kindly, and not at the insistence of the city, but as an accommodation to the community, expanded their look at the traffic. And the reality is that 15th Street is going to take the burden. Yes, there are two entrances off of, from this project onto 17th Street, but I live in this neighborhood and I know that if I was living in this new development, I would never take those entrances to get onto 17th Street, because they're always crowded and they're always congested. I would go back to 16th Street and go to Cordova and then down to 15th Street, especially if I was going north, that's the only way I would go. The irony, the absolute irony of this whole thing is that the bypass road, which they're counting on to accommodate the traffic going south, has been a priority of this neighborhood for 15 years. We were here on that bypass road when it was first proposed, when it was killed, when it was secondarily proposed, and we are the ones who are championing it to make sure it doesn't get canceled, because, you know, it's not a done deal until it's a done deal. The irony is that we worked so hard to get the bypass road to relieve the traffic on 17th Street, and now every development that's coming in on 17th Street, this is just the first, they could all fall like dominos, are all saying, well, because we have the bypass road, we don't have to worry about the traffic. So there's irony in that, we, we have to live with that, it's just, that's the way life is. So
Can, can I ask you to wrap it up in a minute?
Yes, I am going to wrap it up. So from our perspective, we think that we have been able to engage with the developer and the city staff and make as many improvements as we can with this project, and I hope that you will add that condition, and I hope that the commission will approve of that condition when they get to see it, and that's, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just, I just want to make sure the condition you're speaking about is the contribution
That is the, that is the condition, and especially, we did not want to take the money, we did not want the money.
You want, you want to know that the city's going to implement it?
I want the city, I want the city to hold the money, I don't believe it's appropriate for the civic association to have any connection with the money. They've made the contribution, they're making it to the city, not to us, this is no quid pro quo here, they're making it to the city for a city project of speed, of traffic calming on the appropriate road pursuant to the city's traffic plan.
But, is there any, is there any assurance that the city is going to agree to this and that it's only going to cost $30,000, or is the city going to have to find?
My understanding is that the language that the applicant just read to you is the language approved by the city's, city attorney for inclusion into the document, so I can assume, I can only assume that the city is in agreement, since the city So I can assume, I can only assume that the city is in agreement since the city attorney. Am I correct, Robert? That language came from the city attorney?
Working with the city attorney.
Great. Yeah.
Okay.
The part where we talk about that this is subject to the acceptance by the city commission, that part did come from us. So the understanding is that it's subject to the review of the Transportation and Mobility Department, and also the acceptance by the city commission, his staff doesn't have the authority to accept this money.
Okay.
Bye.
Brad? Yeah, I just wanted to know, gave a nice speech, by the way.
Thank you.
I just want to know, so are you guys in favor of it? Like, I, I don't understand where you stand. You, you guys, you just worked as best as you could with them, so is your association, did they take a vote? Did they say, yes, we're going to-
No, our association did not take a vote. There's no point in taking a vote. This is the plan. This is the city's plan.
Right.
For Seventeenth Street, for Federal Highway, for Andrews Avenue, for Sunrise, for Oakland. This is the plan. We densify the majors, you know that.
I get it. So just, the answer is you guys never took a vote?
No, we never took a vote.
Okay, but you just decided to work with them as best as you could?
That was our-
And they provided everything that you wanted?
Well, they provided everything that they agreed with us and the city staff. We would have liked fewer units, but that's not the plan.
I got you.
The plan, they made it.
Okay.
So what can we say?
Got it.
Aside from, it's too many units. We would come here and write you a letter and say, oh, it's too many units, and you would ignore, you wouldn't ignore it, but-
I would never ignore you. You seem lovely.
It would not, it would not, it would not, thank you very much.
No, it's okay.
But it would not be relevant to your discernation.
I got it.
So that's it.
Thank you.
I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Jay? Jay Mike?
I have something, Marilyn. Does Harbordale have a master mobility study that was done for the neighborhood master mobility plan?
No, we don't have a master mobility plan like Tarpon has. We have worked cooperatively a number of years with TAM, and we have a number of projects on the, what do they call it, their, their, their list, okay? We have traffic calming on their list. We have a proposal to reconfigure the intersection of Harvard, of Eisenhower Boulevard. We have a proposal to say, change some street directions, and we've been working with them over a number of years.
Yeah.
So we don't have a plan. We have a sort of, more like an action plan.
Okay, yeah. I'm going to recommend to the board that, that, you know, we, I mean, it, what, I think the money should-
Can you save that until afterwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Momano before we excuse her?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name is Robert Kane. I live at 1819 Southeast Seventeenth Street at the Port condominium. I'm a member of the board at the Port condominium. I have some photographs here I'd like to send around. I'm here to speak against the development of Quay for several reasons, primarily because-
Can I, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yes.
Are you representing yourself or the condominium association?
I'm representing myself.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I have a problem with the Quay. I live right in that neighborhood, and I believe that the infrastructure on Seventeenth Street, as well as the water treatment plant, is insufficient for further development. The first photo I, I show you here is a picture, this happens about at least 10 times a year during cruise season. I live on the 14th floor of the port, and we took this from our balcony. The traffic goes all the way back to Federal Highway. The next page is a page of the general layout indicating where the new convention center is, the Seventeenth Street running from left to right. The X's in the circles on that Seventeenth Street show the traffic lights. As you will see, I have identified the Quay property, which is currently an open parking lot, and there's no traffic light into and out of the Quay other than through Fifteenth Street and at Eisenhower Boulevard. Some commentary was made earlier that the bypass road is going to reduce the traffic on Seventeenth Street. Well, that's true to a point, except all that traffic is going to dump on that intersection between Eisenhower Boulevard and Seventeenth Street, which is exactly where the residents of the new Quay, if it's approved, are going to go in and out of.
I'm going to extend you for one more minute, because I interrupted you earlier. So I get, you've got another minute.
Pardon?
You have one more minute. I extended your, your time by one minute, because I interrupted you earlier.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The, the photograph on, on page three is a little bit better photograph showing where the convention center will be, and on page four is an actual diagram of the convention center hotel, which I want the commission to note, the convention center is going to add 800 rooms, and that doesn't, of course, that doesn't take into account when we have conventioneers that, that use the convention center. And the TGM apartment building has approximately 400 to 500 units, also emptying out on Eisenhower On page five, I show an aerial photograph of Seventeenth Street east of the intercoastal, where the two proposed towers for the Pier 66 is located. And on the last page five is an illustration of those two towers. Now, I will grant that Pier 66 has not sought approval of those towers, but there is a high level of discussion of it. So to get back as to the inadequate infrastructure, in addition to the additional traffic on Seventeenth Street, the traffic going in and out of the, on Fifteenth, excuse me, Sixteenth Street, going in and out of that Quay parking lot is going to be significantly enhanced. And that currently is a, well, it's a private roadway through a parking area, and it's not adequately lined, nor is it adequately large enough to accommodate the, the traffic. For example, when you drive through there, oftentimes the boatyard has vendor trucks parked to load and unload goods to and from the boatyard.
Sir, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up as well, please. We've extended it.
All right. The, the second issue, I believe, is infrastructure, is that the wastewater plant, the Lorman plant, is currently at 50, excuse me, 48 million gallons per day, and it maxes out, according to the state regulations, at 56 million gallons a day. And I believe that's going to be insufficient when we add the convention center and additional work on Pier 66, as well as the proposed Quay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Could I just get a copy of that document that you submitted to the board? We need to, over here.
Who's, oh.
We need to add it to the record. Thank you.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Alex Bajin. I live at 7 Portside Drive. I'm representing Portside Yacht Club. Portside Yacht Club is an HOA that has been there since 1982. This didn't exist when these, when our units were put up. All of you have been by Seventeenth Street. You're all well aware of it. We have had, I'm going to say, no less than four periods of time between January 1st and the end of February, where we could not get out of Portside Drive to leave to get to Eisenhower Boulevard. We've also had to put up with new neighbors, some which have been great, but we put up with the Port condos. We have then, in their infinite wisdom, put up Broadstone, which changed its name recently, which is now next to that. This is all at Eisenhower Boulevard. We have no other method of getting out of our property than going up to the Grand Drive or the access road, going up to Eisenhower Boulevard or 16th Street. That's the only way we can get out of our property. I don't think I need to express upon you, or impress upon you, the congestion that we deal with, not only with people, but traffic, to the extent of, we were having trucks, that's been eased a little bit. But all of you know the situation on Seventeenth Street. How this project could have even been anywhere near approved is beyond my comprehension. It's going to add to traffic. Sometimes the traffic on Seventeenth Street is so bad, the only way we can get out is by going in the back road of 16th Street and going up that way, heading north, to get out, to Federal Highway, which is, as you know, backed up. I would just urge that this project be put on hold. I don't think there's any reason for 300 and some odd more residents. There's plenty of space now, and if you have any doubt, I would encourage you to drive by, come to, come to our area on any given day, and see what we live with, every single day. Our units are very expensive. We pay a lot in taxes. And as one resident said to me, he doesn't know why he's paying taxes, because we don't even get garbage pickup in our place. We have no children in school. We get nothing. And all, all that keeps happening is further, further cluster development right in our There's nothing more I can say. At traffic studies, we've been through it, Marilyn, I'll tell you, every traffic engineer I've ever seen said there won't be a traffic problem. I've never seen one that said it's going to be a problem. But I understand who pays them, and I don't think that anyone should be fooled believing anything else, because you're common sense people, you understand what the truth is. And the truth is, when you have more people living in an area, they're going to have transportation, and that transportation is generally a car, and that car has to get in and out of that area somehow, and there's only two streets. So traffic studies, we went through this when they were developing the convention center. We had a suggestion from someone, and I'm sorry, I can't recall exactly where she was from, and her suggestion was that we not use our car anymore and try to get by on bikes. So I looked at my wife and I asked her if she was good with that going to Publix to get groceries. She didn't like that idea. All I'm saying is just common sense. I mean, we just can't take anymore there, unless you just don't want us living there. And I, I guess, then we'll have to deal with it. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beth Fowler. I'm representing myself. I'm a new member of the Harbordale Civic Association. I live on 1731 Southeast 15th Street, and I've lived there for, since 2013. And I was kind of floored when I heard the presentation about this building. I can't believe, I'm echoing exactly what everyone has already said. I'm shocked that we're considering adding more density and more traffic to this area. I nearly fell off my chair when I heard this gentleman say Fifteenth Street as an alternate route. I take that every day. It's, can't handle anything more. And this is a smart group of people. I can't understand how these traffic studies could not prove that. It just doesn't add up to me. All I hear are politicians in developers' pockets. And you hear a lot of that going around, like chatter, just like online, neighbors. So I definitely do not support it. I don't understand why we keep adding more density, more residential units, yet the traffic is never addressed. That's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to weigh in on this item before we close the public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed, and we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion and motions.
I'd like to say something, if that's okay. I drive Seventeenth Street a lot. I know someone there, a girlfriend lives in the area, and I hit it a lot of times. And I see the traffic that everyone's complaining about, but I also realize that the traffic caused on Seventeenth Street is not from the people that live there. It's from the commuters going through, from the beach down A1A1 direction, out west, and the other way coming, same way, so east on Seventeenth. And as everywhere in the city gets more residents, they're going to be commuting through there. It's not the residents that are local that are clogging Seventeenth. And, and I'm going to say that, yes, 350 or 60 residents there, they will likely not be going and coming all the time. They may go at a rush hour, go to work at a certain time, and come home at the end of the day, but commercial businesses get a lot more traffic all day long, going and coming. And once again, I just need to mention that it's not, it, it's not those local residents that are causing so much traffic. It's a thoroughfare. And we've seen this in some other areas in the city, too. Residents are unhappy, power line and other places that, in residential. So, so when you say we, we need to keep the residences out of there, remember, it's only going to be a fraction of a difference from what's happening, from what already is there, and, and what's going to include, because as everywhere else in the city keeps growing and getting more residents.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else? Mary?
Yeah, I have several concerns with what we've heard tonight. First of all, that intersection at Eisenhower and Seventeenth Street, particularly when the bridge goes up, and is just always extremely congested. So it concerns me that that's your point of coming out, that's where you want to come out. And I know within the last, I'd say, five years, they added the traffic signal at the intersection there by, huh?
A little bit further to the west.
A little to the west, just block to the west, not even a block. And I know that they added that because of the difficulties coming in. I know that there have been some adjustments, but in spite of the adjustments, that intersection at, at Eisenhower and, and Seventeenth Street is problematic. And if that's how you're going to get in and out of this, I mean, what-
Well, no, that, that would be, that's not the main way in and out of this. So our main driveways are directly on a Seventeenth Street, so you don't have to go around the Renaissance Hotel and use that exit. If you want to go that direction and you want to choose that, as well as you could go west, so that, one of the important things about this site is that traffic can distribute in numerous different directions. The reason I brought up Eisenhower is because that specifically, and, and look, I understand parking's a visceral thing, and, and I drive Seventeenth Street all the time as well. I was shocked that when I really saw Seventeenth Street at its most severe, was I was going to get my hair cut three weeks ago, it was early in the morning, and I'm not usually up early Saturday mornings. At 8 o'clock on a Saturday morning, there's a lot of traffic. But that's not people living in the area. That's a cruise ship industry that we have and that we support and is part of what we do here. As far as it relates to Eisenhower, we, our traffic consultant took actual trips. These aren't just paper, you know, theories. We measured actual trips over 24-hour periods on 15th and other streets, and that is where these conclusions were made. It is also important to note that the traffic study specifically speaks to, and I know it's not just the, the bypass road, but improvements that the county and state are going to be making to that intersection to improve signal timing, to make it work better. So that whether this project happens or not, they're already working towards that end. Now, when the bridge goes up, I'll give you that. That is, you know, that's, that's an issue for, that really can't be dealt with. I was on a sailboat once with three people. I was lucky enough to be on it, and we went through that bridge at 4 o'clock on a Saturday afternoon, and you feel, you think about feeling terrible. We had one sailboat, four people on it, and traffic was backed up because of that one sailboat, as far as you could see, east and west. But we're not going to be able to do anything about that, because of course, we want to support our marine industries as well. So, you know, those types of uses, when you have people living there, to the point that was made, I know now when to go across Seventeenth Street, because I live in the area. You know, I know when to cross Los Olas. I know when those bridges are going to be up. And so I don't think these types of uses in here will bring nearly as much traffic as you could get from other commercial or hotel uses.
Just while you're here, I, I also have a concern with the parking reduction, because I, as I said, I was at that lot today. It was fully parked. And where you're seeking to make the reduction is with the commercial. I, I find, I, I find that problematic, because where are those cars going to park?
Well, I understand, again, I repeat, that we're actually incre, even with the reduction, we're increasing the amount of parking that's provided there now. So the number of parking spaces for commercial actually goes up with this approval, and those parking spaces are now full spaces, you get rid of all the, the short spaces.
I know, I would just say to you, probably this was the opportunity to not have a parking reduction in an area that- reduction in an area that needs more parking. So, and also, when you're talking about Fifteenth Street, I just keep in mind, there's an elementary school there.
Yep.
That the traffic is very heavy, not just at rush hour, but in the morning, when the children are coming to school. In the afternoon, parents begin to line up there around 1:30 in the afternoon. And so I just...
Well, again, that's where we're trying to help. So not that, you know, that is literally where this money will go to, is making that condition safer. That's our attempt.
Brad?
So, thanks. The parking reduction is something I'm having trouble with. The traffic is the traffic over there. I think it is always a massive amount of traffic. If we, let's say we voted no on this, the only thing that you're asking for permission for is actually the reduction in parking. So it would just be, it would be another project.
Well, it's a little different. And this is a shared parking study, so the parking, the decision on the parking reduction is generally made by city staff in this case. So I think that decision or that has been made. What I would suggest, we'd probably frankly do, and without even talking to my client, is take out some of the commercial and retail in our building.
Right.
To make that work.
Right.
But that commercial and retail is what's going to serve the building.
I get it.
That's what we'd get rid of.
You know, out of all the people that present, you always come up with solutions like that. That's why I think you're successful most of the time on your projects. I always have a problem with parking reduction, even this last, the last one that we just did.
Yeah.
It wasn't that big of a deal of the parking reduction, because they had a lot of data backing up that, you know, a lot of people were going to be taking Uber and Lyft. And that's a big thing with some of these commercial properties.
Well, we certainly think that's the case here, particularly when you look at Seventeenth Street.
Right.
And we can talk about that. I mean, already, we see all the folks walking up and down Seventeenth Street from the hotels. So we really believe to park this building at the full complement of parking, I mean, we could, we could take out retail, we could add parking. We really believe that it doesn't warrant that extra.
Benefit.
It doesn't benefit that. I will say, too, now I'm really off here a little bit, this is the truth, the residential at fully parked, as the Fort Lauderdale code requires, is a lot of parking for residential.
Right.
So there's going to be plenty of parking. We see whole garages with empty floors in some of these residential. Not downtown, where you don't have a parking requirement.
And just speaking to the people that spoke already, and even the gentleman that spoke earlier, this is permitted use for this project. You're not coming before us to ask to build this on that property. You're coming before us because of the parking reduction, essentially.
This site, any site plan, whenever you're doing residential on commercial and it's adjacent to the water, which this is, we come before this board.
Right.
But yeah, we're not changing the waterfront, but technically, we're on the water.
And I just wanted to make sure that the people who spoke understand that what we're voting on this evening is really regarding the parking.
Yeah, to Marilyn's point, you know, we're not asking for any variances, we're not asking for waivers. This is designed, allowed up to 50 units per acre. We're under 50 units per acre. We have more landscaped area where required, more open space, et cetera. So yeah, we're meeting the code requirement.
And just so the people that, thank you, and just so the people who spoke know, that would be something that the city commissioners would have to change. That's nothing that this board can address. That's why when Marilyn was speaking, and I understand that, listen, I travel on Seventeenth on a Saturday or Sunday, you want to go to the beach, I mean, it's crazy. Seventeenth is crazy, in terms of the traffic there. So yeah, something has to be done with the traffic. But to speak to everyone, and this gentleman did a very nice job with the explanation, but to speak to everybody, that is something the city commission has to change on their end. That's nothing that we're voting on this evening. We're voting on whether or not this parking reduction should be, you know, allowed and about that. And I generally have a problem with parking reduction, but I understand what you're saying, because I think the retail does benefit that walkability for that area. So it's kind of a tough trade-off, but just so everyone understands.
Sure. Microphone.
One of the things he mentioned were restaurants, and in that, just there, on-site, are several restaurants already.
Yeah.
Now, if you walk down the next block, there's several more restaurants.
Yeah.
If you walk down two or three blocks, you're at a major grocery store chain. So I guess what I'm saying, Robert, is, is there a way to mitigate some of what you're putting in there so that you don't have, you don't have the parking reduction and you can, is there a way to mitigate any of that? Because I don't see in this particular, in many sites, that's true, but on this particular site, all of that's right there already on the property.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Some of those good restaurants went out of business. Some of those went out of business. They were really great. But I understand what you're saying.
I mean, I would say that buildings like this, you know, honestly, it's about the residential uses, it's about the shopping center. You're not making a lot of money off those buildings, but they add a really nice amenity to this corridor. I mean, they really do. As more people live there, as they're in the building, it provides a nice streetscape along Seventeenth Street. It's just a good addition. You know, the planners will tell you, you got to have it, notwithstanding parking and traffic, but that's what, you know, that's what the city wants to see along their corridors.
Yeah, I'll say a little something along the same lines, one last thing. What they're asking for is a 5% parking reduction. On item one tonight, we approved a 32% reduction, just to put things in perspective, and also the fact that, as we were discussing here, all that retail that is existing there now, you know, is still on the same property, and I assume owned by the same owners. And if there is a problem with commercial parking, he's going to hurt his own business, his own tenants, his own pocket, on the retail, on the ground floor of the residence, and also around it, because I believe it's the same property owned by the same owner. So, anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, a quick question. Mr. Lockery, so you're requesting a parking reduction, but how much is being added to the commercial parking? How many exact spaces are you adding to commercial?
Yeah, I mean, right now, there's about 362 parking spaces out there, I believe. I'll let me confirm that. Yeah, which is coincidental. Now, they're all, they're not all regulatory spaces. What's being, what will be located is a total of 1,079, 415 of those are reserved for commercial. So it's an increase in spaces overall.
Of how many? How many are yours?
415 commercial. So from 362, from 362 to 415.
Right. So it's a net increase for the...
Mary, I see your light's still on. Do you have another comment?
Oh, sure.
No?
Well, now, I'm finished with questions. I just want to make a comment as a whole. I, you know, I find it disturbing that neighborhoods come before us and feel there's no point in even taking a position, because the perception is that this is what the city wants, and yet we're the planning and zoning board. And we do have the ability to make recommendations to the city as far as what some things we could do to change to impact traffic and other things, not with this particular project now, I'm talking about with the code. I don't compare this with the previous project, Steve, because I think that was a totally different type of a project in a different setting, and I think you have to look at the setting. So I will forever be disturbed that we have residents who believe that there's no point in trying to fix these problems that are just getting worse. And it doesn't matter where you've been this past week, it's what the conversation is. So, and so I'm looking at this project, Robert, with the eye on the parking reduction, which may only be a few places. But it's adding restaurants in an area that has lots, I mean, that's the rationale, that doesn't make sense to me. And I've said all this, so I just would say, I think there are a few adjustments that could be made here. Our problem is we run up against the 180 days, which I thought the city had fixed. And so with that, I guess you can figure out where I am on this.
Okay. Jay?
Robert, or Mary, the restaurant space you're suggesting that he's adding, are you referring to just like the commercial space that is being added to the new building that's going to be along Seventeenth Street, or at the ground floor? Which additional commercial space?
I think that probably would account for the parking reduction, so that would probably solve the problem of this before us, Jay.
What are you suggesting though?
But it just seems like it's a duplication of many other things that already are there, not only on that site, but within a few blocks of that site. So to say they're conveniences for the neighbors, I mean...
Well, but I guess what I'm, all I'm asking is what I'm hearing, that like this could be better if there would be no new commercial use, because then I think it's really just an issue of what would, at that point, you know, you're sacrificing on one hand an enhancement of the neighborhood, making Seventeenth Street more, a little bit less of a major, you know, thoroughfare corridor, transitory feel, more of a sense of community, you know, walkability. So there's, that's a balance that I would be curious to know what people, you know, how people feel.
And I wish we had time to get that information, but as they pointed out, we're up against the 180 days, which is a problem for us. But, you know, the one thing that's on here is parking reduction. I think that could have been solved by what they're adding is commercial space. And if you've walked that area, if you've eaten in that area, which I'm assuming most of us have, you know how many different things that you're talking about are right there at the ground level already, right on that site, right on the same exact site. So that, but I just, tonight, and I'll bring this up under for the good of the city, I think we have to get a handle on traffic on every corridor in this city, and how we continue to put more cars on a road, how we continue to totally ignore the environmental impact of what we are doing. If you want to just pick one thing, the time that people spend in their cars, the, you know, the way that it impacts accidents, the way we feel about the city we live in, I think those are things that we have got to talk about. That's not what's on here. So I'm going to tell you, the parking reduction is a problem. I think it's clear how I feel, and maybe that's it.
Jay, your light's still on. Do you have another comment, or are you done?
I just think if we're going to talk about the parking reduction, let's look at how much parking is being proposed and what's being built.
Let's discuss that, unless it's specific to this project.
Yeah, specific to this project.
Okay, all right, sorry.
So how many parking spaces are there today?
362.
Okay. For commercial, for the residential?
There's 362 spaces today.
362. So if, in the new project, how many spaces are you going to have for the commercial space in total?
415.
Okay. So an increase in the commercial space, and you're only adding 12,000 square feet of space. That's the equivalent retail of like one Walgreens, of added new commercial space. Okay, so then, in that case, you know, how many spaces do you have for each of the residential units?
The difference between 415 and 1079.
Because from what I understand, the two-bedroom apartments are going to each have two spaces each.
Correct.
The three-bedroom apartments are going to have three spaces.
2.1.
I mean, it's, there's plenty of parking, is what I'm getting at.
In the building itself.
Right. That's why, that's why I'm saying, if we're going to discuss parking, it's, there's more than enough parking for this project.
Yes, our parking consultant has confirmed that, yep. And the other thing we added was, it was, as again, as Marilyn indicated, originally it was just one parking garage. They have asked that we segregate the two uses so that the residents don't park in the commercial. I think ultimately, that residential parking will probably shrink a little bit, only because in our experience, the residential parking is really heavy in Fort Lauderdale, when you're outside of a downtown. The requirements, I mean.
Anything else? Anybody else want to weigh in on this? Would anybody like to make a motion? We have another item that's got a lot of people to talk.
So I'll make a motion.
Turn your microphone.
I said I'll make a motion not to approve, based on the data before us, but I don't know if I'll get a second.
So we have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
In your motion to deny, can you clarify which code section they failed to comply with?
Okay, did you provide those for us here? I'm trying to look quickly, sorry.
Is it under adequacy requirements, where there's improvements that you believe should be provided for the traffic, or...
I don't believe that they have, I believe that a parking reduction is not appropriate on this site. And I find that there are reasons for having a parking reduction, that it's, it's absolutely necessary to have added commercial in an area that is everything around them, restaurants, there's Walgreens across the street, there's, I mean, all of that is right there within walking distance, so.
So the criteria for parking reduction is in 4720.3. They have applied for conditional use, but the criteria for a parking reduction is in And so what do you believe they have not met? Is it the adequacy requirements? Is it...
I believe they need to fully park this project, given, I think they need to fully park the project.
So they have failed to meet section 4725.2 adequacy requirements?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Not hearing a second. Motion fails. Is there another motion?
I have a question for staff or legal. So we are voting whether or not to recommend the site plan approval of the entire project. Is that right?
No, this is a conditional use, so you can approve it, you're approving it at this board or denying it at this board. It only is subject to a commission call-up afterwards, so this board is giving the action as approval or denial, not recommendation.
And the actual decision is made here tonight, right? Okay.
With the caveat that we have, as Mary indicated, the 180-day deadline under Florida statute 166.033 expires tonight. However, they agreed to a 30-day extension, but that really doesn't give the commission an opportunity to call it up, just to make sure that you're aware of that.
But I'm just asking to clarify, it's not just the parking reduction that we're voting on, it's the site plan approval.
That's correct. Under the conditional use, it's everything that, if you look at page one of the staff report, it talks about what they're asking for approval of, which is the new mixed-use building, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, so they can't then go and build the project, just if we vote no, they can't go build it with a different parking configuration.
That's correct. You would have to approve or deny based on what you've been given, unless something is withdrawn.
Thank you.
Mary, I see your light back on.
Oh, well, that's purely accidental.
Okay. So...
I'm going to ask you a question.
Go ahead, Bill.
Robert, just a quick question. I mean, it's obvious that everybody, everybody is struggling with the parking reduction. What is, what is the possibility of a redesign or a design, or have you looked at something where...
I mean, it's really not a lot of parking spaces to give up, a commercial space along Seventeenth Street. I mean, I really would have you all think about that. I mean, we can do that. I just, I think, you know, you may end up with a net result that's not as good as what you're seeing today. I see some nodding heads. I also just want to, while I'm up here, want to remind, if anyone does make a motion to approve, we want to remind you about our commitment, so please include the 30,000 in there, too, to the neighborhood. I mean...
The parking lot...
Robert, just in the, in the 12,000 square feet, I mean, I'm trying, I'm looking at the plan here, but in that 12,000 feet, how much of that is intended to be retail versus restaurant?
Right now, about 7,200 is potentially restaurant, and the remainder is retail. But yeah, if we changed it all to retail or got rid of all that space, we would not be asking for a parking reduction. But we think the users in that building are going to, you know, you think about all these buildings which have those in the bottom of them, it's a really nice thing to have along Seventeenth Street.
Do not have to drive.
But, but just for the rest of the board, I just would tell you that if you've tried to go in and eat in the restaurants directly west of there, it's often very difficult to find parking. If you go to the shopping center that's directly west of that, it's often very difficult to find parking. So, I mean, I think you have to take the totality of this, of this area, which already has grocery stores, Walgreens, I mean, it has all of these things, so...
Yeah, but to have them connected is so nice. I mean, it just creates that pedestrian pathway, you're coming back and forth. But, you know, the project, I guess, could be approved without that commercial and retail in a way that we're not asking for the parking reduction, but the rest of the project's approved. You know, the P and Z board has the ability to do things like that. I just personally think that would probably be a mistake.
Go ahead, Shari.
Because I want to come back to the retail tenants that are there, the boatyard, the things that use up those spaces every day, they're going to have more parking when this is approved than they do today. parking when this is approved than they do today. Can't get around that. The commercial places in this building, they're, people don't, you know, you're going to get a lot of people in the building going to that, you're probably not going to see as many people driving to this location.
And I would argue that you're losing micro-units, micro-spaces for full-size spaces where somebody like me will take up a space and a half, instead of my own little private space and get my car all dinged up.
And this is why I think I'm less concerned about the parking reduction in this instance than I am with some other issues, but I don't think they're before us, right? Ours is, is not to, to opine on the project, but what's before us and the conditional use and the request for the, for the reduction in parking. So, the reduction in parking, I think, is potentially negligible. I hear the argument that with, you know, the retail and the changes in the size of the spots, that it's actually a net plus, and I get that. And so that doesn't bother me as much. And I think what is bothering many residents is the sheer impact of the development and having, you know, more residents and more traffic. Quite literally, traffic is the thing in our city, everybody knows that. But I don't think that that's what's before us, and I think that's something that we need to make clear, if I'm accurate about that, Shari.
Okay, thank you.
Traffic is a part of adequacy requirements. That's in 4725.2. Traffic is, is in there. So it is before you.
Okay. So we're back to where we were. Does anybody want to make a second motion?
This is Steve. I'd like to make a motion to approve case UDP S22015. And staff, can you help me through the rest of it, please? Including the 30,000 contributed to the city.
Okay, is it based on the findings of fact in the staff report and the testimony you've heard?
Yes.
And are you including the voluntary condition read by Robert in the beginning, as well as the conditions in the staff report?
Please do.
Okay, and thank you.
Is extending the 180 days part of this as well, or is that something between them and the city and the city commission?
That's between us and the.
Okay, so we don't need to make that part of the condition?
They voluntarily agreed to extend it by 30 days. That is not going to be enough, but that's what they voluntarily agreed to.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, Patrick seconded. Jay, additional conversation?
I just think that if, if this were to get approved by the board tonight, that we should specify that the funds that are collected are solely for, in the Harbordale area, to make sure that they don't get, you know, siphoned into some other area. We want to make sure that any adverse impact, if there were to be some, were mitigated directly.
I believe the condition that was read is saying that it's to be used toward funding of traffic coming measures within Harbordale.
Excellent.
Do you want something else in there, or, because that's what the first sentence that I, that I have here read, so.
No.
You're good with, okay.
Just saying that with the, even with the 30-day concession, that would not be enough time for the city to process this. So if this passes tonight, there will not be an opportunity for our city to call it up.
Well, normally, it takes a while for us to get things on the city commission agenda, so, you know, I don't want that to cloud your judgment as far as approval or denial of this project, because it's based solely on the criteria and the code. I just wanted to be frank with you and let you know that usually things can't get on the agenda that quickly, but it will depend on the city manager, so.
Okay. Robert, go ahead. Well, the only thing I want to say, we picked 30 days, because under the city code, the city commission only has 30 days in which to act, so that, that's all.
The 30 days starts when? Tonight?
Yeah, I mean, that's by city code. So they have to pass a motion within 30 days.
It's out of your control beyond that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by Steve Gannon, second by Patrick McTeague. Any additional discussion before we take it to a vote? Ms. Leslie.
Mr.?
Yes.
Ms. Spurtig?
No.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
No.
No.
Ms., or Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Five to three.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. Give 30 seconds for those who want to leave, leave. If there's anybody else that is planning to speak to item number five that has not been sworn in, please do so. I've got a bunch of cards of people that signed up to speak. I'm going to start with these, and then, and then we'll go from there. If there's anybody that was missed that didn't fill out a card. Okay, while they're clearing out, let's do some disclosures. We'll start from the right this time. Mary, you want to start with disclosures?
Disclosures, yes. I visited the site. I visited the extended site. Thank you.
Shari?
I have none, thank you.
Steve, any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Patrick, any disclosures?
Just site visit.
Jay?
Site visit.
Brad?
Site visit.
And none from me, so. All right, this is an item that got pushed over to, not pushed over, but got continued until this evening from a couple of months ago. Ms. Tappan, floor's yours.
Thank you. Lorraine Tappan, Urban Design and Planning. I have a presentation that reviews the proposal for this particular agenda item and a review of some of the events up to this time. So the proposal is to rezone the area in what's called the Northwest Quadrant, a nickname for this area in the Central City CRA, the Community Redevelopment Area. It's bounded by power line to the west, Northwest 13th to the south, Northwest 16th to the north, and Northwest 7th Avenue to the east, and is just north of Thurgood Marshall Elementary. That's probably a landmark that a lot of people know. So the original recommendation that we started with in, at the October Planning and Zoning Board meeting, was to rezone the area from its current designation of RDS 15 to RM 15. And I'll repeat, you know, what the different zoning designations mean. Then, based upon input from the Planning and Zoning Board, another alternate recommendation is to rezone just the area from power line to mid-block between Northwest 7th Avenue and Northwest 8th Avenue to RM 15, and the remainder would be RD 15, which is actually the designation this area was about 20 years ago. I'm going to cover some of the recent communication, some of the outreach that's been done to get the word out. Based upon a request from the Planning and Zoning Board, we mailed out notices in English, Spanish, and Haitian Creole to property owners within the proposed area and within 300 feet of the area. A number of emails went to the South Mill River Civic Association about the public participation meeting on March 1st and tonight's meeting. The CRA staff distributed door hangers and also delivered with the, actually, 260 copies were delivered by the South Mill River Civic Association members around the area. CRA staff called people who attended the prior meetings that left their phone numbers on the sign-in sheet. We also presented to the Central City Alliance a couple times with the South Mill River Civic Association, and we had about 22 people attend the public participation meeting on March 1st. So on this slide here, you can see that some of the, on the bottom left, that's the newsletter, and notice that went out for a number of workshops in 2018, and that was a part of an overall effort on rezoning the entire community redevelopment area. And then there's the copy of the door knocker. Then the map on the right shows the proposed area to be rezoned, plus the 300-foot radius around it. That shows you the area of property owners that received the notices in the mail. We also kind of put together the total cost of the notices out to the public for these, for this effort. So at the public participation meeting on March 1st, we had 22 people attend. And from the comment cards, we learned that 10 supported the rezoning, 7 were neutral, 2 opposed, 3 didn't answer. So that gives you a sense of what the balance was at the meeting. We got really good questions and really good comments. People asked, you know, what is medium density? And we explained that medium density means up to 15 dwelling units per acre, and with this rezoning, there is no increase in density. Participants noted that they like the townhouses and the contributions of the new townhouses, Gardenia Park on Northwest 17th Street, and they felt that they liked the fact that it came with sidewalk, and there wasn't as much traffic as they expected. Other key questions that I'm really glad that participants asked, they asked, will property owners be forced to sell or update their properties? You know, there are some people had big concerns that this rezoning would force somebody to take action on their property, and the answer is, property owners will have options to keep their properties as-is, update, upgrade, or redevelop their property with the rezoning. Also, people asked, will renters be displaced? Property owners can continue to rent their properties. At rents, the market will support. And people are concerned about property taxes as well. And we, a lot of folks already know, but we reiterated that with, if you have an owner-occupied unit, you get the homestead exemption, and that limits the increase in taxable value, which limits the amount of taxes that might go up over time. And of course, we did hear that people don't like the, the conditions on Northwest 8th Avenue. Some were concerned about, how would they know about new development coming in? What if their neighbor decides to redevelop their property? Now, if somebody does build a new, you know, one traditional detached, single-family home, the neighbors wouldn't receive notice. But if you are building townhouses or multifamily, those projects go to the Development Review Committee, and those agendas are posted for the public to see. And in addition, if somebody were to build zero-lot line cluster or mixed-use, those projects would require public notice requirements and sign requirements, and would also be required to go to the Planning and Zoning Board. So key takeaways, property owners with the rezoning, property owners would have the options to keep their properties as-is, update their properties, or redevelop their property into another residential type. Property owners could continue to rent out their properties. The rezoning effort may potentially provide more future housing options in the area. And the property taxes are based upon, you know, state regulations which limit the percentage. They can increase every year if they're, if you have a homestead exemption. So again, we're, here are the, the different options for the rezoning, the original and the, the one recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board. But we're going to review what those designations mean. So the current designation is RDS 15, which only permits traditional detached, single-family dwelling units. RD 15, which was a zoning district 20 years ago, allows regular, single-family, but also allows duplex, cluster, and zero-lot line development. Zero-lot line is not so common in the city these days, but it's, that's what's in the code today. And the RM 15 allows all those types of residential developments. In addition, also allows townhouses and multifamily development. So here's a comparison of the dimensional requirements for RDS 15, the current zoning designation, RD 15, and RM 15. So most importantly is that there's no change in maximum height. It's 35 feet today, and with either option approved, the maximum height would be 35 feet. And you can see the other dimensional requirements, like the front yard, the distance from the street to your house, the side yard, rear yard. There, it's quite similar for all three districts. One thing to emphasize with allowing options with the different types of development is that we have more rigorous standards in the code for multifamily, townhouse, cluster, and duplex developments, more rig, which don't exist for single-family detached homes. For example, multifamily, townhouse clusters and duplexes have a street tree requirement in addition to the required trees for the property. Those trees need to go along the roadway, and the objective is to provide shade over the sidewalk for people walking. Townhouses and clusters, their fences must be at least 75% opaque, so there's not a, there's a visual connection between the building and the sidewalk and the street. And also, there's an additional setback requirement. Once the building hits 22 feet in height, then the building has to set back from the property line. That's reduced the impact of the height on the neighbors. Townhouses, clusters, and duplexes all have a requirement for roof landing, that's like a little overhang over the front door. So, and here on the slide, we have some examples of, you know, townhouses in the top left. The second photo actually is a cluster development. Sometimes clusters kind of show up looking like townhouses throughout the city. The third one is a duplex, which surprised me, because I thought, when I first saw the photo, I thought it was a duplex myself, and then the bottom one is a duplex. So that gives you an idea of the variety that we see around the city. So let's take a look at where these proposed zoning designations exist. Well, just south of this area, just south of 13th Street, and, you know, east and south of Thurgood Marshall Elementary, that area is RD 15. And we have some photos on the slide that show you types of duplex buildings that are being built just in the last few years. Then north of La Solas Boulevard, we're seeing an example here of an RM 15 zoning district. And on the slide, we have a couple examples of townhouse developments over in that area, including one three-story townhouse. Then just south of Rock Island Elementary, there's an RM 15 zoning district, and the photo on the right is a picture of a recently constructed multifamily development. And then on the bottom, the map on the left, you have RM 15 in a couple of sections between Davie Boulevard and Broward Boulevard, and there's an image of some townhouses in that area on the right-hand side. So this is the final slide of the presentation. So the staff recommendation is the original recommendation, which is to rezone the entire area, proposed area, to RM 15, to allow all these options for different types of residential development. The other option is the one recommended by the board, which is to extend RM 15 from power line to mid-block between Northwest 8th Avenue and 7th Avenue, and the remainder would be RD 15. And that concludes the presentation.
Yeah, are there any questions?
Anybody have a question?
No? Nobody have any question? And I think we have to open it up to the.
Yeah, open up for public.
Open up for public. Anybody from the public want to speak? Yeah, so let's, while we line up like, I don't know, five at a time, probably?
I've got cards.
Oh, he's got cards. Hold on, don't line up. The man. Anybody from the public want to speak? Yeah, so let's, why don't we line up like, I don't know, five at a time probably? Oh, he's got cards. Hold on, don't line up. The man's got cards.
Sorry about that, folks. Okay, so I've got 35 people that have signed up to speak. As I mentioned earlier, if you are here on behalf of an association, you'll have five minutes, otherwise you'll have two. Obviously, if we've got 35 cards here, we're going for at least 70 minutes. So while I strongly suggest that you say whether you're in support or against it, to be repetitive really doesn't do much for us up here on the board. So we're gonna, I'll call your name. I'm going to say who's speaking first, which is Carol Salazar. And according to this, you are representing the South Middle River Civic Association. So I'm going to give you five minutes. After Carol, if Dennis Almer would queue up. And after Dennis, we'll go with... It says you're a South Middle River Civic Association. That's fine. If you're not, then I'm going to curb you back to two minutes. So I saw the association, so I thought you were part of the association. Okay, that's fine. Love to hear from you. And then again, after that, Mr. Almer, and then after that, B.I.R., K.E.N., Birkenfeld? Sorry if I butcher people's names. Not my strong suit. And if you would all do me a favor, please announce your name and where you live, your address. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Salazar, and I'm at 1235 Northwest 3rd Avenue. And I am for the change because it would just improve the neighborhood. And that's, that's it.
I like your brevity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Almer, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Almer, 1007 Northwest 11th Place, Fort Lauderdale. I'm a former member of the Central City CRA Board. I served on the board from February 2021 to February 2023. I am speaking on behalf of myself. At your January meeting, I sent a communication to the Planning and Zoning Board in support of the rezoning. A board member asked if the letter writers had asked about neighborhood input. I'd like to answer that question. As a board member of the Central CRA, I am required as such a member that if a duly-made motion is made and seconded, I'm required to vote on it. I did that based on the public hearing at the meetings that I attended. Ms. Tappin has explained to you the comments that were received at the March 1st meeting. I also attended the March 1st meeting as a citizen, as I was no longer on the board, but I wanted to hear the public input. Based on that public input and the fact that the South Middle River Civic Association has been working on this zoning change since 2018, I supported it as a board member based on, again, the public input that was given at those public meetings and also at that meeting that I attended March 1st as a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Lothac Birkenfeld? Sorry if I butchered your name again. Not here? Okay. We'll now have Bradley Varner, and then followed by Rolando Manzano, and then Alan Beck. So if you'll please queue up. I'm assuming you're not Mr. Varner? I'm assuming you're not Mr. Varner? He looks like a Bradley? Like you would know?
I'm a Brad.
Like you would know?
Yeah, I recognize other Brads.
Mr. Varner, you have two minutes. If you please state your name and your address.
Bradley Varner, 1321 Northwest 5th Avenue, and I'm for the project, for the rezoning.
You're, you're my hero.
Like all Brads. Excellently done.
My name is Rolando Manzano, and I live in 1101 Northwest 2nd Avenue, and I agree too with the rezoning.
Good. Thank you. So Vice Chair Brad Cohen is suggesting that in lieu of everybody coming to the microphone, if, if, if you're in support of it, just acknowledge that you're in support of it and not feel compelled to come up and talk, introduce yourself and all that kind of stuff. But just acknowledge that you're here and that you're either for it or against it when I call your name, okay? So thank you, Mr. Manzano. Alan Beck? Does he look like an Alan? Okay.
I'm for the...
If you're gonna, if you're gonna speak, sir, please announce your name, address, and...
Alan Beck, 1118 Northwest 4th Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. I'm for the proposal.
Thank you, sir. Queued up next is Edward Catalano, then followed by Tim Emerson, and followed by Carmen Smith. Are you Mr. Catalano?
He has to speak in the mic.
I'm sorry, what's that?
He has to speak in the mic to get it on the record.
Can we do a hand, a, a show of hands? But then I don't know who's to eliminate.
The issue is if they would like to speak, we can't compel them to sit there and raise their hand. So if they would like to speak...
It was a good suggestion, Mr. Cohen, but we're going to have to go with each person speaking individually.
Can I just ask?
I'd like to know where they come from, where their addresses are. So we do need them to speak, at least say an, say an address. I want to know if it's in the neighborhood, near it, away from, that sort of thing, please. So yeah, we need to do that, please.
If you'll, if you'll introduce yourself and give us your address.
My name is Edward Catalano. I am the current treasurer of the South Middle River Civic Association, and I'm in favor of the rezoning change.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go with your Carmen Smith.
Hi, I'm Carmen Smith. My husband, Rob Smith, and I, we live at 1209 Northwest 3rd Avenue in the lovely neighborhood of South Middle River. We have lived there since 2001. We joined the Civic Association before that, and we have really worked this neighborhood. So we've worked hard to improve it. I just wanted to say that I am for the rezoning for so many reasons. I'll try to make it brief, but the, the people that have to live in that area have to look at this big eyesore. It's just been going on. It's just time to, for a change. And I think the rezoning will, will improve redevelopment, which we need so much because the, it looks, it looks rundown and it's very dilapidated. It's just, we need this rezoning so that area can thrive. And there's some people that are opposed to it, which I don't understand how that could be. But I don't think they live in that area, and I don't think that they, they have to put up with all that stuff that goes there, with all of the rundown housing. And I think that they use the excuse that somehow poor people are going to lose their housing, which I think is total misinformation and really not true. It's time for a change because I don't really think that this rezoning is going to cause anybody to lose their housing. So I'm for it, and, and so I just ask that whatever is in charge or the powers that be to make this happen, please do so because we're way overdue, way overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we have Mr. Emerson coming up, followed by Marie McGinley, Carol Weller, and then Robert Miller.
Hello, my name's Tim Emerson, 1110, 1112, 1109 Northwest 7th Avenue. I am very much in favor of the direction that this, this new zoning will create. However, as a caveat, I would like to put it out there. Mary, you said it best early on. A lot of times we sit in this audience and we do, we don't believe that we're being heard. As you watch this tonight, I noticed a couple of the, the people up here were on their computers almost the entire time. It would come to a vote and they're like, oh, where I'm at. Northwest 7th Avenue from Sunrise till 13th, where you're, where this starts, is a complete freeway. We've had cars come, hit at 11th, at the intersection of 11th, come up the side of houses. At the intersection of 13th and 7th, cars going up the side of houses. At my house, a car went up the side of my palm tree, decapitated, and the car burned in the street. We had over 40 different accidents at Northwest 7th and 11th over the last year. We've been approved to have a four-way stop at that intersection. However, it seems to go on deaf ears somewhere. It's been approved. You know, I, I try to stick with the association and try to keep in my little lane, but this has gone on since when this was changed. We were talking about the speed on Northwest 7th. We used to have, have guys out there that were tracking it. Nothing has been done. So I appreciate this. This is great. But please, if any of you have any way to help us slow down Northwest 7th, I'd sure appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Marie McGinley, followed by Carol Weller, followed by Robert Miller. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, go to the back of the list for one last call-up. You must be Robert Miller.
Yes.
Followed by Jason Shervinsky and William Cody. Good evening, sir. Are you here on your, behalf of yourself or a, an HOA?
In the interest of brevity, I'm here on behalf of myself. However, I am a member of the South Middle River Civic Association. My name is Robert Miller. I live at, God, where do I live? 727 Northwest 18th Street. I've lived in the South Middle River area for going on almost 10 years owning houses. I am strongly, adamantly in favor of this rezoning. In our area alone, in the 10 years, we have shouldered quite a bit of responsibility in regards to the city with, let's say, Sunrise Avenue and the blight and the general malfeasance that's gone along in there. We have shoulders a lot of the homeless that were evacuated from the camp downtown that has moved into our area because there are services. And in return, as a community, we have participated with the city with greener routine, street cleanups, beautification projects, porch roll calls. We have shown ourselves to be good stewards, good citizens, and this is our one small little opportunity to bring revitalization and energize just a small quadrant. I think that's the least that we could get from the city, and we've certainly earned it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shervinsky?
Okay, one second. Let's just make sure that Jason Shervinsky isn't in the audience.
I'm sorry? He left? Okay, thank you. Mr. William Cody? Name and address, please, sir.
Yes, good evening, everyone on the board. My name is William Cody. I reside at 1245 Northwest 2nd Avenue in the beautiful South Middle River. I am also the secretary, the current secretary of South Middle River Civic Association. And I just want to thank you for this opportunity to, to speak on the proposed zoning change. I've been here for over seven years. In 2017, I went to my first crab general meeting. This was a meeting where consultants asked many questions from where more than 100 people were in attendance. This public meeting was the first of many meetings that was going to be held. The South Middle River Association started to get involved with the process and made some suggestions. After at least seven public meetings, this proposal is now all before you. The city and South Middle River Association have spent many hours trying to inform the residents about this change. The city printed letters in three languages to help everyone explain about this change. This change will make this neighborhood much better, just like it did with Gardenia. Okay? 10 members of South Middle River Association distributed over 400 of those letters to the residents to come to the meeting on March 1st and to the meeting as well tonight. And this was written in multiple languages. And the meeting on March 1st explained what changes would be made to the neighborhood. The meeting brought out certain individuals in our neighborhood are being told many different things that are incorrect and misleading about this zoning change. Many of the attendees were happy to have the zoning change explained and all their questions were answered. The change will allow owners and, to be in compliance with the current, the current zoning while giving owners an incentive to make their properties more attractive to not only their current renters, but to prospective renters. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. All right, next we have Michael Tormayen, followed by Wayne Shanholz, followed by Thomas Pierce. I'm sorry? Michael left? Thank you, ma'am. Wayne Shanholz, followed by Thomas Pierce, followed by Paul Lanata. Good evening, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name's Wayne Shanholz. I live at 1321 Northwest 5th Avenue, and I've lived there in South Middle River for 21 years. That particular part of the neighborhood has still deteriorated over the years, and I would love to see this change so for the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pierce?
Good evening, Thomas Pierce. I live at 431 Northwest 17th Street at the Gardenia Townhouses, and we're very happy to live there. We love the neighborhood. We love South Middle River, and we're in favor of this project.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Lanata.
Paul Lanata, 431 Northwest 17th Street in South Middle River, and I am in support of the zoning. Preference would be to the staff proposal over the board proposal, but whatever gets us further along, I'm all for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My apologies for butchering your name because your handwriting is impeccable, and I should have seen Lanata. My apologies. Dakota King, followed by Sean Roethlis, followed by Debbie Litz. Good evening.
Good evening. Dakota King, 1504 Northwest 4th Ave., and I support the rezoning.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Sean Roethlis, 429 Northwest 17th Street. I serve as the current vice president of the South Middle River Civic Association, as well as the current vice president of the Gardenia Park Homeowners Association. So I believe that means I get 10 minutes to speak. Is that correct?
20 for you.
Oh. Well, my dog's name is Charlie, and I support this proposal. Thank you.
Tell Charlie we said thank you. Ms. Litz?
Come on up. Hi. Good, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to tell you that my name is Debbie Litz. I live at 1437 Northeast 2nd Avenue. I've lived there for almost 39 years. I've seen a lot of different changes. I have always thought Northwest 8th Avenue was horrible, horrible. My husband was a teacher at Fort Lauderdale High for 18 years. He just died eight years ago. We used to go over to some of the parents in those homes and duplexes over there, and I was always appalled at what I saw. Just personally, I was appalled. So was my husband. But I want to know what we can do to improve the neighborhood. Whichever we vote on, I want to see improvement. That's all I want to tell you. And I'm totally in favor of the building and zoning proposal that we've got up in front of us tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have Lorraine Saunders, followed by Lynn Morgan, followed by Patrick Vida. Are you Ms. Saunders?
Lorraine Saunders, 1735 Northwest 7th Avenue, South Middle River. I've lived in South Middle River in two different homes now since 2007. Prior to that, I lived a little further east in Middle River Terrace. And even since I moved there, 8th Avenue has been in horrible condition, and things have been needed to be done. South Middle River feels like a dumping ground for the city. We get to have feeding programs, but we don't get to get nicer homes. We have no problem with the homeless, except that they impact quality of life in some ways sometimes. But we really want to improve the neighborhood and make it better for all the people who do own there and live there and have to deal with the crime that comes with some of the things in the neighborhood. I've been personally involved in this particular thing since the first meeting at War Memorial when we had charades and asked for suggestions. It took forever to get the 13th Street portion done, and it's taken even longer to get this portion done. We just want the CRA staff to move forward so that whole entire quadrant of the city can be better. And I would support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Lynn Morgan, followed by Patrick Vita.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Morgan. I am the president of the, I am the proud president of the South Middle River Civic Association.
Would you like five minutes?
Um, I don't think I'm gonna need it because we're running late.
I'm gonna give it to you, and if you come up short, you're gonna get as big of applause as Charlie did.
I want to explain one thing about why I am a proud president of the South Middle River Civic Association. And I want everybody who's been out there the past few weeks, on the streets, in this area, knocking on every single door, to stand up and take a bow. These people from our board, from our civic association board, the way I've calculated it, they've knocked on about 250, 260 to 275 doors. So, they've done their due diligence to try to spread the word, to answer any questions, to provide the people that live in this area the information that the city has been putting out. I represent the civic association, but I also am a resident and a homeowner and have been for 21 years. During that, and I'm also within 300 feet of this particular project. So, for 21 years, I've lived with 8th Avenue, and it's been always filled with crime and blight. And I will say that I've seen some wonderful improvement on 7th Terrace and 7th Avenue over the past few years. 8th Avenue hasn't changed. It doesn't matter if we're talking to the police regarding crime or code. It just doesn't get any better. And as I said, it's filled with a lot of blight. The chain link fence, the furniture in the front yard, the disabled cars. This is something that we've had for 21 years. We've walked those streets with the police. We've tried to fight the crime. It's still there. So, the civic association has had a couple presentations from the city. The civic association does approve this resolution with the hope that maybe there'll be a little more pride and ownership on 8th Avenue, and we might see some improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Something tells me that you're gonna get some accolades from Mary Furtig on your community outreach. She's already reaching for a microphone.
Well, not only her community outreach, but I just want to recognize Lana in this neighborhood for organizing the feedings once a week at community court. They started a program where neighborhoods, and my neighborhood's one that participates, bring bag lunches to neighborhood courts. But it started in South Middle River, and thank you for giving us that opportunity, Lynn.
Patrick Vita, followed by David Durham, followed by Terry Nolan and Jose Cardenot. Good evening, sir.
My name is Patrick Esfida. I reside at 1440 Northwest 2nd Avenue, and I support the code change.
Thank you, sir. David Durham. Good evening, Mr. Durham.
Good evening. My name is David Durham. I live at 1440 Northwest 2nd Avenue, and I approve the motion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Terry Nolan. Good evening, Mr. Nolan.
How are you, sir? My name is Terry Nolan. I live at 1432 Northwest 1st Avenue. I am the former president of South Middle River Civic Association. Lynn, you're doing a great job. Keep going. And I just want to say that I'm in favor of this project. It's well needed.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cardenot, followed by Charles Leitner, followed by Jessica Bentoncourt.
My name is Jose Cardenot. I live on 1516 Northwest 4th Avenue. I am one of the directors of the South Middle River Civic Association. I'm in favor of the change of zone.
Thank you, sir. Charles Leitner, followed by Jessica Bentoncourt. Jessica Bentoncourt? Come on up. Followed by Edward Schmidel. I'll let you say it, Brad. Go for it.
Hi, my name is Jessica Bentoncourt. I live in Gardenia Park, unit number 541. I'm in favor of this new proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Schmidell.
Oh, come on.
That says what it says, Schmidell.
I did a perfect job. Is Edward here?
After I did that for you, Edward?
Okay, we have Niara Davenport, followed by Ray Thrower, followed by Sean Smith. Good evening, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Ray Thrower. I think some of you members will remember me being here before.
Yes, sir.
I live at 1239 Northwest 1st Avenue. I'm the chair of the Central City CRA. I've been a member of South Middle River Civic Association since 2007, which is when I moved to the neighborhood. I just would like to thank the Planning and Zoning Board staff. Honestly, I think the outreach that you requested has been a positive. I really do. And I think there's been a lot of questions that were answered that some of us who have honestly been working on this since 2012. I mean, sometimes I'm like, can I talk, continue to talk about this? Because honestly, when the Central City CRA was formed, I was one of the original members, and then I turned out. But that was what we talked about, was redevelopment with some of these areas that we're talking about. And the city staff with the language in Spanish and Creole have done an outstanding job. And I know the Central CRA supports this originally, I mean, 100%. We believe this is a positive. But if I could go back to one thing, the slide that talks about the new development south of 13th Street. What's in front of you now is just asked to have this redeveloped what's like south of 13th Street. And if you looked at our community, South Middle River Civic Association and the Central CRA, you've seen the redevelopment south of 13th Street, and it's very compatible with single-family homes. There's many single-family homes there that are next to duplexes, new duplexes, new townhouse developments. And it's compatible. It hasn't impacted the single-family homes at all. So, I'd like for you to focus on that as well, and appreciate your time, and look forward to seeing you approve this.
Thank you, sir.
So, we go to City Commission.
Thank you, sir. Niara Davenport. Sean Smith. I'm hoping this next one is here because this is right in my wheelhouse. Carlos Eduardo Casati dos Santos. Wow. I'm looking forward to this. Buenos tardes, señor.
Buah tarde. I'm from Brazil, so I speak Portuguese. So, good evening, everyone. I live at 381 Northwest 17th Street, Gardenia Park, with my wife, Roberta, and our son, Luca. We are in favor of the change of the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Stephanie Shervinsky. Stephanie? She left? All right, two that we called that we didn't get any response. They may have come back into chambers. Lothak Birkenfeld. Somebody's doing a good job of taking attendance out there. And Carol Weller. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Yep. If you would, please state your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Nwasi Sutherland.
I'm sorry? I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
Nwasi Sutherland. I go by Vanessa. Good afternoon, everyone.
I'm sorry, your address, ma'am? Your address?
1610 Northwest 11th Terrace.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. God is here. He sees and he hears everything. I don't believe that we are here by chance. God allowed things to happen so we can be alert, aware, and active. We want us to be like bread yeast. The zoning don't make any sense to me and the community. It's still not resonating to make sense. How is anyone that lives in a direct area that will be affected agrees to a rezoning from residential to commercial? No one voluntarily move for someone to build a new complex that they cannot afford to buy, rent, or even breathe the air. We were told that the residents were aware and informed. We have family members that's over there. The residents, we went knocking from door and trying to speak to some of them. We had even an interpreter, but the people still did not understand what was going on. The residents said that they had no idea what the sign meant. So, who don't speak? Most of them do not speak English. They don't read or write English. We met some disabled seniors that can't make it out here. We believe this is a civil rights violation. Some say they never was told or received anything in the mail. We believe that this is discrimination and segregation. We were told by some of the white residents that this is not happening on our side. The HOA refused to inform the resident or speak in behalf of the residents that live there. We saw a sign posted in front of homes, not on all corners, and that was only one. Last month was the only time we saw that the HOA posted a sign on the power line and on 16th and power line, I mean, 9th Avenue and 13th Street.
Ms. Vanessa, can I give you one minute to wrap it up?
The mission of Fort Lauderdale Commission is to present the pub, to represent the public interest, promote quick and courteous respond to resident problems, provide leadership direction, and ensure present, future integrity of the people. People have come and said they don't want the rezoning and vote on paper. We have, we continue to be deceived and tricked by our local officials. This caused a pattern of segregation and is not promoting fear housing choices, causing disparity or unfair opportunities. This will not foster inclusion, community free from discrimination. How can you guys sit here and are okay to throw out human beings? So many people don't have luxury like you guys have too. Fort Lauderdale is not ready for higher traffic and crime. You guys are creating problems other than that other states are having homelessness. You guys are planning, this plan was all the way, all the way up until 2018, started at 2018. The community don't have any idea. The city is delaying and refusing to hear the concern of the poor people. The CRA refused to inform, and the 8th Avenue resident will be directly be affected. We can't ask any questions during the hearing, and I believe, and we also believe in our community, this is only about money, not for the integrity and the misfortune of the people. We are working class, and we work. We are here, we are here. Most people are not here because they are working to pay their rent. Are your communities and residents being affected directly? Living in, people are living in their cars, the streets, the bus stop. They're living on sidewalks. I truly believe that when you're asking, when you're seeking to cause mischief and grief for someone else, expect it to happen to you. We have, we have walked the community, and we have knocked on some of the doors, and we can't even communicate. So, I don't understand a lot of people. We met residents who's been living and bought in the area about 40 years. Some of the residents been there 40 years.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna need to wrap this up, please.
Yes, I have 95 votes from the community, and we want to be able to include it in this, in this talk.
Okay, thank you. Were you sworn in, sir?
Yeah, I've been sworn in.
Okay, please step up. Give us your name and address, please. You have two minutes.
My name is Gary James, and I live at 1218 Northwest 4th Avenue. It's just south of 13th Avenue. I moved in eight years ago, and when I moved in, one of, the first night I moved in, my house was burglarized. And I tracked my phone, we tracked the phone back, and it actually came from, it was found north of 13th in that area that we're talking about right now. Over that time, this area that we, I live in, is RM15 zone, and it has improved over time. The neighborhood has gotten better. It's, it's, every time a new neighbor moves in and all that, it doesn't bother the traffic, it doesn't change things like that. It improves everything about it. The crime goes down, and it's been great so far. So, I'm definitely supporting the RM15 proposal.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this subject before we close the public meeting? Seeing and hearing none, the public meeting is now closed. We'll bring it back to the board for further discussion and/or a motion. Does anybody wish to make comment?
I was just gonna point out that when we originally started talking about this, I brought to the board's attention about the RD15 because as we saw in the images that they presented at the beginning, you know, there's a little bit of a difference between RM15 and RD15 sometimes in how it can look. The Gardenia Park feels kind of like an RM, and I think that around the perimeters of the neighborhood, if, you know, over the next 100 years, that's how it, you know, it grows on all the vacant land, then that might be appropriate. But that, the rest of the neighborhood is really kind of, you know, front-facing, a lot of single-family homes, and that you don't want to adversely impact the integrity of the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood. So, that's why I had suggested the second proposal, which has the RM15 on the perimeter towards the highly-traffic road power line. And then on the interior, more of the, you know, front-facing duplex, just units, basically what's already been built there today. Like this, just the same type of property that was built when it was RD15 the first time. So, that was how we ended up here, and I will, I still recommend that today.
Is that your motion, Jay?
I'll make that a motion.
Well, let me, let me make sure nobody else wants to be heard from before we start making motions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to say something?
No, I was gonna second.
Does anybody else want to have comment? My, my, my quick, go ahead, Jay. So, my quick comment is, two months ago, we had a lot of emotional testimony in here, which compelled, I think, a lot of us to say, go back out. And I think a combination of the city and the civic association sounds like you've done a very good job, and I appreciate that. I can vote tonight with a lot more confidence in knowing what is being felt out there. So, I appreciate everybody's doing that. Brad, did you have something else that you wanted to add?
I was just gonna say that, you know, we've, we've pushed this, pushed this, pushed this each time because we weren't, we wanted more and more, and I want to thank you. I, I'm sorry. Lorraine. Lorraine's been very patient with us every time she gets up there, and we say like, hey, we really need more input. We need more. hey, we, we really need more input, we need more, uh, community outreach. And it seems like, uh, this time, there was a lot more community outreach, although you can't always get every single person in every single house. I think that it was a lot better effort on the part of the city to put it in different languages and, and post and then also have people knocking on doors and things of that nature. So I'm more comfortable voting on it tonight. I was just gonna echo what you said. Thank you.
Any other, um, comments before Jay makes his motion?
Yeah, I, um, so in the code in 4724-4, it talks about the fact that if you're gonna have more restrictive zoning than what's proposed, then the applicant actually has to agree. So I just wanted to clarify whether or not there's an agreement to that or, um...
Sorry, isn't the applicant the city or the CRA?
Yes, so, um, I'll let them speak.
Who, the city or the CRA?
Um, so Siege is here, uh, she will speak to that.
From the city?
Yeah.
From the city?
Yes.
The only reason I ask is because at, at one of our prior, oh, public hearings, it was my understanding that the city had put on the record that they were also in favor of that as a suggestion.
Um, I think what, I, I think the meeting that I remember was that, I don't think she had authority to agree to it, so she had to go back and speak about it, but I, I could be wrong. I just wanted to make sure that they, they were fine with it.
Good evening, uh, I'm Clarence Woods. I'm the manager of the Central City CRA and will accept the motion, uh, as proffered by Mr. Shekman.
I think that's excellent and sorry, I just want to point out, one of the gentlemen from mentioned that this could, this area could continue to improve like south of 13th and all of south of 13th is zoned to RD 15. Just want to point that out.
So I just wanted to make sure that Leslie got that. You got his motion? Okay, good.
So it's a little bit unverified, just chair.
Yeah, 'cause I, I felt like that should be repeated for you.
So we are going with...
Yeah.
I know, I haven't, I heard it on...
Are the lights on?
Paul Sherry's.
Just want to make sure that we are, we are going with Jay's, uh, split motion and that's what you're suggesting, Jay, right?
Yeah, the planning and zoning board recommendation.
And that's what I'm seconding. Okay, that's what I'm seconding.
Yeah.
Can you just repeat it, Jay, so that Leslie gets it?
Yes, case number UDP Z22017. I move that we adopt the planning and zoning board recommendation map on this slide.
I'm not sure how that translates on the record to this slide, so...
Uh, the, what you were saying before about the, the change in the perimeter, can you describe what you wanted so that it's clear in the motion?
Yes, that the, um, first block, the first block and a half from power line be, uh, RM 15 and that the remainder to the east, second block and a half be RD 15.
Could we just get a confirmation if it was as depicted on the graphic that Lorraine presented as part of the presentation?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are we ready? Is that, is that the end of your motion?
That's it.
Do we have a second?
Mary seconded it.
I'm sorry?
I seconded it.
Mary did?
I did, like three times.
With your microphone off? All right, so Mary Furtick seconded it.
Well, I'll second it again, yeah.
That'd be a third. So Jay made a motion, seconded by Mary. Any further discussion before we vote on it? Ms. Leslie?
Mr. Shekman?
Yes.
Mr., oh, sorry. She's getting fixed. Come back, Ms.?
Yes.
Oh, okay, Ms. Furtick, that's a yes, just for the record. Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Wayman?
Yes.
Passes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for all you folks, those signs are coming out.
Congratulations, everybody. Thank you for staying late and all your hard work. Congratulations.
Can we, uh, Mike, just for this neighborhood, can we forward that suggestion that they made to somebody about the four, about traffic calming on 7th, if that's a neighborhood? If your neighborhood wants traffic calming on 7th?
I, I hear what you're saying, Mary. My only concern is that this isn't a novel idea. This has been something that, I mean, 17th Street has been under the microscope.
Well, I'll do it for under the good of the city. Is that where we are?
Folks, we still have some more meeting to, to do, so we ask you to kindly...
Ms. Furtick?
Well, it's never gets resolved.
Do you want to put on the record that comment?
Yeah, I would just like to see the city work with its neighborhood to finalize the traffic calming that's been discussed.
For this neighborhood? I'm sorry, for this neighborhood? I'm sorry, I thought you were on 17th Street.
No, I was on 7th.
So you're talking about 7th Avenue?
I'm talking about 7th Avenue where there are various, where there is a traffic signal at 13th and a traffic signal at Sunrise and...
It could be enforcement.
Huh?
It could be enforcement.
It could, but they've apparently promised them a four-way stop that's never come through. So if they could just pursue the traffic calming and make it happen, that would be a good thing.
So is there any way that we could talk about maybe getting sidewalks or northbound South Avenue between 13th and 7th? Don't get us started.
Yeah, yeah. Not, here, not with us.
I think that we should be doing a whole sidewalk, a whole sidewalk conversation, but...
Let me give you Dean's cellphone number.
Thank you, folks.
Ms. Furtick?
Oh, sorry.
Just for clarification, that was for this, the 22017 project.
That was for that last, one of the gentlemen brought this up and I just wanted to say, suggest that we support moving ahead with this as a board. We could do that as a communication to the city or we can just tag it on.
Yeah.
All right, anything else before we adjourn?
Oh, yes.
I have one.
Oh, yes. Oh, no.
Mine is brief.
No, huh?
I think mine is brief. A potential...
Well, I don't know whether to have you as brief or, or have you opposing arguments, counselor. Why don't you go ahead, Sherry?
All right, just a thought, um, we have, tonight, twice talked about parking reduction.
I'm, I'm sorry, there's a lot of background, we can't hear you here.
Folks, can we ask you to step outside, please?
Excuse me, can you guys go? Because we can't hear you, hear them. Sorry, we can hear you.
Folks, take it out in the hallway, please. Thank you. One more time, Sherry.
Yeah, I just wanted to know where we were on the agenda, because because of the background noise, see, I'm hearing impaired, so I can't hear that plus you, so where are we?
I'm hearing impaired too. We're doing for the good of the city and Ms. Sherry McCartney is, is talking about parking reduction.
Thank you. So my, my thought was, um, as we've addressed this twice tonight and other times, you know, recently, a fair amount, I'd, I'd rather not adjust a rule regularly and repeatedly. I'd rather have the, uh, the city address what is actually a periphery in terms of parking. And if the standards have changed, as indicated, right, by the, the engineering group, if the standards have changed, then maybe the city needs to revisit the standards. I'd rather have the, uh, the law changed than us trying to make exceptions all the time. And perhaps in this era of, of working during, working at home and Ubers, that maybe, you know, maybe that needs to be revisited. I don't know whether you're in favor of communicating that to the commission or not.
Sherry, how, how does something like that move forward? How do, how do you revisit a requirement or what have you? I mean, I, I don't think, obviously, we can make a recommendation. I think it's gotta be probably studied ad nauseam and then we give it another 10 years and then we talk about it again and maybe get it done for our grandkids.
Yeah, so, um, the parking reduction criteria, it's quite extensive here in the code. It wasn't only adequacy, there were other things that they have to meet. And so the, you know, I would recommend perhaps a, um, you know, a recommendation. Are you saying that you want to remove it completely from the code?
No.
Or make it more restrictive or...
I, I think the general sentiment is the current code is, is a little excessive.
Okay, excessive? Okay.
Me, meaning, no, 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 I don't think you're, not that the, the code is excessive for the parking reduction, that the code is excessive for the park, for the actual parking requirements.
Okay.
So like, like the hotel that came, right? When that was written, there probably Uber and Lyft wasn't a big thing. So like now, Uber, Lyft's a big thing and you got people like, uh, was it, is it Joaquin? Who, who was the?
Joaquin.
Joaquin Vargas. So you got people like Joaquin who comes to the table with a lot of experience in this and he says, hey, listen, the norms have changed and even though the city requires 1.2 parking spots, it really should be 0.67 or 0.62. So what we're saying is someone needs to take a look at that and say, hey, wait a minute, there's Lyft now, there's Uber, everyone's got a scooter, there's all these different things that we didn't have when we were originally written. So what we're saying is someone needs to take a look at the actual parking requirements for these different areas and maybe lower those parking requirements so everyone doesn't come in front of us and say, hey, listen, we need a parking reduction and here's the proof why we need a parking reduction, because people stay where they live now or they work where they play, et cetera, et cetera. That wasn't happening before. And two things, one is the city is, wants to move towards that density where people are walking instead of driving. So that has, I think, started to occur where we didn't have that when it was originally written. And then we have all these different forms of transportation that we didn't have when this was originally written. So that's, I think that's what we're trying to say.
Well, and, and I'll, and I'll pile on by the luxury of being able to have the employer that I have and, and the experience that I've got, that with the 231-room hotel and a parking garage that is attached to it that has 530, 521, 521 spaces, I think it is, and we use it for employee parking, we use it for event parking, we use it for everything. And I have four full floors that go absolutely vacant every single day. And so, you know, we didn't build four stories of parking because we had nothing better to do. And quite frankly, I use it as a piggy bank for when I have to do off-street parking reductions or requirements where I park them there because they're within the distance that, that I need them in. And so even with putting Tommy Bahama in there and putting the boathouse in there and put it, I still have four full floors of empty parking. So I, I advocate that there is, that it needs to be revisited. I am certainly not a, 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 a parking consultant or an engineer, nor do I play one on TV, but it needs to be addressed.
I would recommend a, I'm sorry, did you want to?
I just wanted to add one thing to this. When he brought up about using it with other projects, years, when I was on planning and zoning before, which I know was a long time ago, we kept getting these requests on the beach and everybody was gonna use shared parking someplace for it. So we asked, Patrick's nodding because he knows the same thing. And we, and we asked that the city in specific areas, and I think 17th Street could be like an example, that on the beach, they keep track of all of the parking reductions so that you could go and see how many spaces had been reduced and if in fact there was, they, they were double counting a certain place, you know? And I think what you're saying is, is like, could be, I think all of this could be blended together into a much better policy.
Remember, we, we did a 95% parking reduction for the Planta Restaurant on La Soul, it's the new Planta Restaurant. I mean, we took it, I, I don't even remember the number, so I'm not even gonna recite them, but I remember it was a 95% parking reduction and it's not impacting their business. And, and to my knowledge, I have not heard anybody from Cooley Hammock or Beverly Heights that are coming with torches and pitchforks to, to, to get us for, for what we did. So I, I think it needs to be, Sherry, I think you're absolutely right, I think it needs to be revisited. By who? How? I don't know how, so maybe that's the recommendation.
She does.
I would recommend a communication to the City Commission to direct staff to do a parking study and then based on that study, if necessary, amend the ordinance. So that's what I would recommend. Leslie, you got that?
Yes, great.
Mary, you want to close it out?
Well, I was just gonna bring up about keeping track so we could include that in the study.
Perfect. So we can adjourn?
Uh, did you want to do a motion on that? Because it can't be communicated without your motion.
Okay, that's a motion, Sherry. I'm seconding.
That's Sherry's motion.
Yep.
May I just add one sprinkle here? One of the other items for communication was the traffic calming for the, for the other...
Mary, Mary Furtick.
Then the other was, oh, the other was that we support the neighborhood and getting the, uh, traffic calming that they've worked with on the city as soon as possible.
Wouldn't you want to do that throughout the city, not just on 7th Avenue?
Well, I feel like it came up.
I get what you're saying, but I don't want to be neighborhood advocates for every time somebody comes in here and goes, oh, there's...
But you know what? This neighborhood really, really came out on, on going home to home and talking and I just think that one of the things they pointed out is that they were promised this and it's not there and that kind of, and it's in the area that we talked about tonight. So actually, I feel like we can just advocate for this one neighborhood.
I'll put a $5 bet on it, that the, the district commissioner there is fully aware of what you're wanting to communicate with him.
That's fine, that's fine.
If I may, if I, if I may, the caveat with that is that, um, it's still under the call-up, um, time period and until it's finally approved under the code in, for the city of Fort Lauderdale, I don't recommend doing that at this point because if, if things should go in a different direction when it, if it is...
So the reason we're doing it under for the good of the city is so it's not tied to the recommendation that went forward, it's just an awareness.
You can make a general motion that can go up to the city that's not tied to a specific item.
Oh, I don't want it tied to that. I just want this, it to help, I just want this neighborhood to know we heard them tonight. Because I think they put a lot of effort into it.
I, I'm hoping they do. So we need to vote on Sherry's motion, right?
Yes.
And we have to get a second before we vote on it, right?
But I seconded it, so you don't really...
You seconded it?
Yeah.
All right. Is this, is this a voice vote or is it a call vote?
You can do voice vote if you want.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Who was the first?
Aye.
Who made the motion?
Sherry made the motion. Mary made the second.
Mary, Sherry, Mary.
And Gary and Larry aren't here, so. All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.